Of the Committee on Budget, Finance and Infrastructure. The beginning of each committee meeting as Chair of this committee, I remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with any with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it now. Hearing none, I'll ask for Mr. McClure to call the roll, please.
Chair Bolick.
Present.
Vice Chair Codis, Mr. Blaine, Mr. Briner, Dr. Jones, Mr. Meekins, Mr. Patel, Mr. Pryor, Mr. Turner, Mrs. White is not with us. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. First item of business for the committee is to review consent agenda. I am removing one item. Any member can remove an item. I'm removing item three from the consent agenda and putting it on the regular agenda, the easement amendment. So that will go on our regular agenda. Please review, and you did receive the information approval of the minutes, January 17th, 2024, and deed notice with respect to the power plant. Other than the item that I have removed from the consent agendas, anyone have anything else that they would like to remove? Okay, do I have a motion to approve those two items? And put them on the consent agenda for the full board? I have a motion from trustee Meekins. I have a second from trustee Blaine. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Right, and we'll take up the easement at the end of the, I'll fit it in when Mr. Markline is available. All right. Demolition. Our next item for business is approval of request for demolition of the grounds and maintenance shop building at 103 and 105 Daniels Road. I know that, there he is, Vice Chancellor Knopfman. Thank you, sir, for being here. I'll turn it over, turn the committee over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Have a slide here summarizing the series of capital items in front of you for consideration. The first, we're requesting approval of consideration of the demolition of the grounds, maintenance shops, buildings at 103 and 105 Daniels Road. These buildings are in very poor condition. One is unoccupied due to safety. The other is beyond repair. I do want to note for you, this is really a key first mover component of the TRB project. This, the, these buildings sit on the proposed footprint for the translational research building project, and we need to start demo as soon as possible, as soon as September of this year to support our F and A rate negotiations. This item does require approval, and we do recommend.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Vice Chancellor Knopfman on that? So remind us about the TRB building and where we are in terms of progress on that, other than the demolition.
Sure, this is the, the demolition is one of the first, it's in design. And we are expecting to have a completion date is, is a couple of years out. At this point, the next stage really of approval will be, it's part of the self liquidating requests. So the, the building in total dollars is $229 million. The Board of Governors has approved that it as part of the self liquidating request of the legislature. We anticipate the legislature taking that up in this session this year to formalize that moving forward.
Mr. Chancellor, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion from Chair Pryor. Do I have a second? I have a second from trustee Patel. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, that passes.
The next items are request for full project spending authority for, for two projects. The first, the Frank Porter Graham Student Union Elevator Modernization. The BOT approval is required for projects above $500,000 to $750,000. We originally believed this would come in just under the $500,000 amount. Bids came in slightly north of $500,000, and therefore it's in front of you for approval. You might remember, this is related to when we had our tuition and fee discussion back in the fall. Student Union increased fees. Part of it was catching up on some of the deferred maintenance in pieces and being able to. So this is just execution of that, and you'll see another item related to that in some time. Sure.
Trustee Codis.
Nate, I know there's additional spending authority levels, and I don't think we've applied for that. Is that right? That, that would give us more authority at the BOT level?
I believe that's right. I think we, we, I know the, I know we executed at least previously, I think it was at 300,000, and we went up to 500,000. I'm not sure if there's another level we can actually request. I'll look back. No, I think we're at the maximum we can do in terms.
There was a 750 to 2 million range that was delegated authority.
I, I know there was discussion at, at the Board of Governor level on trying to increase that threshold some. I know that was part of the impetus for them even moving it originally from the 300 range up to 500. There, there may be.
Let's just explore that. That might give us more flexibility.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions on the spending authority for Frank Porter Graham? Do you want to try to handle these as a bundle?
You claim you are a conservative Jesus Christ. Do you think Jesus was supporting investment of student tuition and day tax dollars in a country that is committing genocide on holy land? Will you stand by your original values and support divestment from the Rob state of Israel?
You're out of order, sir, so I appreciate your comments.
Do you support the investment from the Rob state of Israel?
Mr. Chairman, this is a violation of policy, UNC policy 1300.8.
North Carolina law and UNC system policy prohibit the willful interruption, disturbance, or disruption of official public meeting. Further, North Carolina law provides that it is a class two misdemeanor for any person to refuse to leave an official meeting upon being directed to do so. Pursuant to these authorities, anyone who interrupts, disrupts, or disturbs this meeting will be asked to leave. They do not leave when asked, they will be removed and may be subject to arrest. So, sir, I'm asking you to leave now. If you do not, you will be arrested.
The board is responsible for the financial care of our community's day tax dollars divested from the genocide in Israel.
Also, Chair Bolick, that even though it calls for the misdemeanor, the minute someone disrupts a meeting, they have violated policy 1300.8, we should know the person's name and status so that they can receive the appropriate punishment through the Office of Student Affairs and the Provost.
I'll ask Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs to look in to see if that is a student, and if so, I would like to encourage disciplinary action. Do we want to handle these as a bundle, or do you want to do them one at a time?
We can handle this a bundle, at least the spending authority pieces. There's one other item that we're requesting spending authority on. It is the Student Stores Mini Clinic. And we're, again, similar to the Student Union Elevator Project. Bids came in north of $500,000 and requires Board of Trustee approval. We're happy to address any, any, any questions and recommend approval of both of those two items.
Any discussion or questions for Vice Chancellor Knopfman with respect to the Student Stores Mini Clinic? All right. Next.
The next item, requesting advanced planning spending authority for, again, the, the Student Union, and this is a roof replacement. The project will replace the Student Union's north building approximately 51,000 square feet. The roof is, is past its lifespan. We, we think the budget for the advanced planning is $200,000. Again, related to the, the point I made earlier about the union and tuition and fees and our fee proposal going up, it's to support being able to do projects like this to catch up on deferred maintenance. Happy to address any questions and recommend approval.
Any questions? Yes, trustee Codis.
So Nate, on a 51,000 square foot roof, and my business, that's about a half million dollar project, about $10 a square foot. Why are we choosing to do advanced planning for 200 grand for designing when the total project should be around 500,000? Why don't we just select a roofing contractor to a certain set of specs and get the project fixed?
I'd ask our university architect to come up and address that question.
Thank you, trustee Codis. We are referring to a condition, facility condition assessment that was performed by a third party that suggested the cost for this particular roof replacement was over $1 million, and that was four or five years ago. So we're basing our progress on that estimate. Obviously escalated, so we would require full authority for this.
Okay, I mean roofing has come back down somewhat over the last couple of years. It had spiked at one point. You had shortage of supply, but I think in things like roofs for this, we need to look at, you can, you could phase it, you could do part of the roof at once. But I don't know that spending $200,000 to study the roof replacement for a, what in, in the private sector would cost 500 grand makes a lot of sense.
Again, we're, we're going off of that estimate that was done pre-pandemic. It was during the pandemic where the spike happened, so we think the escalation will be still a significant number from 2018, 2019. And based on the rules we have to live by, we have to go through this process of requesting advanced planning authority, doing the initial work, getting a more refined cost, and then going for full authority at a later point.
And not to belabor, Dave, but I think that's something worth digging into is how we're awarding some of these and how we can find efficiencies, because I couldn't make my deals work if I had to pay twice what I pay in the private sector to get things done.
Yeah, I thought, we, we had had discussions previously about maybe having a list of, of contractors who were pre-approved and maybe come up with some flexibility with the BOG and the legislature with respect to that. And we, we talked about that.
Yeah, I think that's worth digging into. Maybe that's another initiative that we need to pursue.
It would certainly make our work more streamlined and more cost effective. At the moment, we're not allowed to direct select contractors above $100,000.
So I do have another question. It relates to Student Body President Everett, who had brought, one, one of, one of the things that you brought to the attention is the need to upgrade our Student Union for student services. How, how does this Band-Aid on the roof sort of, you know, fit and lock in with the whole idea of taking a broader look at our Student Union? I mean, I understand this may be an immediate need, but, but, I mean, are we taking a look at that? And where are we on that, if anywhere?
I think you're right, that those are two very different things. There's an immediate need because the roof has been leaking, so we're trying to prevent further damage and cost incurrence to the interiors. And we're sort of following Student Affairs' lead in the point when they want to renew a master plan for the union, which we did about seven years ago. And we'll be happy to help them do that.
And I know that the interim chancellor has formed a committee on infrastructure and, and campus master plan, and I'm, I'm sure that'll be part of that discussion.
Just on that point, in the physical master plan discussion, I know we're having a group that's looking at that, and this will be one, one aspect of what we are looking at. We've heard a, a lot of interest and, and certainly some data and information that shows we're not competitive either in our union or our wellness offerings. And so we, we have been doing some work, a rough outline of how something might be financed moving forward to, to, to address that.
Trustee Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, trustee Everett put a little tour together of the Student Union, and we walked through it, and it is abysmal. I don't know about the leaking roof, but I saw a lot of flood damage. So if, if the water's coming from the bottom and not the top, I'm not sure what we're doing. And whether you use Marty's numbers or, or the other architects' numbers, 20% or 40% for planning is, is a little outrageous, in my opinion. So if those are the rules, we need to change the rules.
Trustee Patel.
That's the question. I think we might have answered this before. Who is setting those rules? Is, is it the legislature or is it the BOG?
Yeah, it's a combination of both state and Board of Governor policy on this area. But I, I will say, I, I think it highlights the opportunity to, to do a, refresh a look at all of these and look where there might be some opportunity for efficiency, and, and we, we can certainly do that.
I, I agree with Marty.
You're an enthesiologist. No doubt by now.
Sir, sir, you're interrupting a public meeting. I'm going to ask you to leave, and if you do not, you will be arrested. I've already made that announcement. So I'm asking you to leave. I'm asking you to leave, sir. This is not the forum for that. This is simply not the forum. I would also direct the Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs to look into whether that is a student, and if so, I would like the, that office to pursue disciplinary action if appropriate. Great. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Knopfman. You, well, did we, did we finish? Did you finish answering that?
On advanced planning, I think we did. So I think it still requires action by the board to.
Yeah. You know, I like the idea, and we've talked about this, and I'll just mention this briefly. I, I like the idea of exploring utilization of the same strategy that we use in athletics with the Rams Club to build new structures and to add on to structures on campus. We had talked about that in the past, where we would maybe be able to have more flexibility if we, if we took an approach and, and, and I'm sure, and you may want to speak to that or not, but I, I would like to maybe make sure we bring that up certainly in the, in the master plan. It's the one with the voice there. As an idea, at least an idea to explore.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is a subject near and dear to my, to my heart. The, the inefficiency of, of the state planning and purchasing process, particularly as it relates to real estate. We don't have state level guidelines for what facilities should cost on a per square foot basis or system level guidelines. I've always wondered why we, why we don't, either for new construction projects, a dorm or a Student Union, shouldn't be that different across the, the system. We should have standardized guidelines for that. And obviously, something like a roof repair is happening across our system, our UNC system routinely. So it would be good to have standardized guidelines. The, the state purchasing and contracting process, as you know, is a lot more complex and costly than, in my view, it, it, it needs to be. And so it's certainly worth exploring, and we will as part of the working group that's looking at the physical master plan, whether there are ways to pursue these projects, not only to identify and prioritize the projects, but pursue them in the most cost effective and efficient manner.
Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. So have you?
Chair Bolick, there's, there's one more set, if you want to take them all.
Let's go ahead and take them all.
And I'll just, really quick, there's four design selections for approval. The most important component, and you can read more about each one of those in your materials. Most importantly, all the projects are funded with state R and R funding, and they were approved by the Board of Governors in January of this year already. So just bringing to the Board of Trustees for designer selection at this stage. And again, happy to address any questions.
And that would include the New East, New West, Playmakers Theater and Hooker with respect to repairs, as well as Graham Memorial, I T S Manning Art Studio Labs, Fordham Hall, and Rosenau Hall.
Correct. And the, the roofing replacement projects.
In Bingham. Well, what about Bingham?
And the Bingham Facility Generator Replacement.
What is that? Can you explain that? Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay, without, unless there's an objection, it would be the preference of the chair to take these up as a batch, as a group. Is there any objection to us taking them all up in one vote? Seeing no objection, do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion from Chair Pryor, and I have a second from trustee Briner. Any further discussion? Yes, sir, trustee Codis.
Correct. I know there are state rules around how we follow the, the reference to, to H U B, the, the use of those contractors. We can circle back with you some more information on exactly how we're complying with both the, the, the state rules and also the, the provision you just mentioned.
Trustee Jones.
Um, just a quick question. Thank you, Chair Bolick. Hey, what, what is the, with the work that's going to occur on Playmakers, will that make that building, the interior of the building, something that we can begin to use again? And what, what is the intended use for that building after these repairs are done?
We, we do have a longer term vision.
Ma'am, you're interrupting a public meeting. I've already made the announcement. You were present for the announcement. I'm asking you to leave, and if you do not leave, you will be arrested.
The Rob state of Israel and defund the genocide that is currently taking place in Palestine. Protect Palestine, protect Palestine, protect Palestine, and protect Palestine.
Once again, once again, I would ask the Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs to determine if that's a student, and if disciplinary action is appropriate, I would request that that disciplinary action take place.
We have seen Mr. Chair repeated interruptions of university business. The south building was disrupted. Barry Weiss's speech was interrupted as well, and we're getting interruptions today. And it will continue until we discipline the folks that are doing this. And I'd like to know what we're doing to discipline these students, because it seems like all there ever, ever happens to them is they leave the room after they've disrupted. And the policy 1300.8 does not contemplate that you can disrupt a meeting for a certain amount of time and then be asked to leave, and you haven't violated. It actually calls for three levels of steps leading up to expulsion. Expulsion is actually an option on day one. So I guess my comments are twofold. I think we really need to address what's happening, and any more outburst here, making sure that we're holding those students accountable. They are required to show their, their ID card when asked and, and get that information. Secondly, if this is one group that continues to disrupt university operations, and I believe they may be, then we need to look at the status of that group on campus and possibly ban them from campus and defund them.
I agree with you, trustee Codis. And I would ask the Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs to look into that. And if there's anyone here that wants to disrupt, I'm telling you now, you're not going to be allowed to disrupt a public meeting. I'm asking you to leave right now because we're not going to have the business of the university disrupted. I'm going to instruct the police. You know, I'm asking you to leave now, so I'm not so sure. I am an attorney. I'm not so sure that that doesn't comply with the statute, so that if you do disrupt the meeting, you're now going to be subject to arrest. So if it's your intention to disrupt the meeting, it would be my inclination to ask the student police department, the university police department, to go ahead and place you under arrest. So just know that. Any other comments on the group? Of, yes, sir, Student Body President and trustee Everett.
Yeah, thanks so much. In terms of the, the tour that we went on, a lot of flooding was in Fetzer. I'm curious about, is there a project on your foresight to address some of that?
At Fetzer in particular, we could, I'd be happy to come back to the board with a longer list. We're, we're constantly looking at, at repair renovation and trying to prioritize the most, either life safety or issues that are emerging on campus. So I'd be happy to come back with a more comprehensive list to talk through.
Trustee Jones. Yeah, 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 you, we're still in discussion. You could, trustee Jones.
I mean, to begin with, I'm so glad to see that these items are on the R and R list. Can, can we go back to the intended use for Playmakers once these renovations are completed?
Yeah, it's, it's a historic building in a, in a incredibly, in a, in a great location, and it's, there is some, we've had a lot of conversation around a longer term use. I don't think we finalized anything yet, but I do think there's interest in, in being able to, to, to use that as, as moving forward. So this is, this is a step toward that goal.
Any further discussion? Okay, just to be clear, we are taking up these as a group. I have a motion on the floor, and I have a second. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, they pass. Thank you. Now, Vice Chancellor Knopfman, to you on the all funds budget. Sure. Let me, let me, let me say before you start that I think the budget process that has occurred with the leadership of this, of many members on this board has been a very productive exercise for the university. And I want to thank Vice Chancellor Knopfman for that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, would you entertain going ahead and dealing with the Gem Gul issue, which I think is more aligned to what we've just spoken with?
Yes, let's do that.
Before we get into this budget presentation.
Let's, let's, that's a good, good, thank you, trustee Blaine. So is Mr. Markline present? Yeah.
Thank you. Also have Bruce Warrington here, Executive Director for the Property Office, who's been.
I'm sorry.
Also have Bruce Warrington up here, who is the Executive Director for Real Estate, who's been working on this transaction. So the request for the easement is, the background is that this property was, was donated to the university, and don't, let's see, where's the, I think. In 1996, when they donated it, they carved out acreage for themselves, and at the time believed that they had the proper easements with the ingress and egress, and ingress and egress. And so now they're coming back as they're looking at doing repairs on the property, noticing that there are, the water sewer does not go through the, that existing easement. So they're asking that we modify the existing easement for ingress and egress to include aspects such as utilities.
And who, who is it that's asking for this? Like, is it the corporation? Is there, there's a nonprofit corporation or a for-profit corporation or an unincorporated association?
It's, it's the Gem Gul Corporation, the corporation that runs the castle.
Is it a, is that a corporation or is it incorporated, or is it an unincorporated associate?
Oh, it's incorporated. It's incorporated.
It is incorporated.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I personally would like more information on this, so I'd, I would move to table this until our next meeting. Do I have a second on that?
Could you provide us with some, could you assist us with what additional information?
Yeah, I want, I want to know what the, what the arrangement is going forward between the university and this corporation. And I would like to know exactly what the relationship is between this corporation and the university. And, and what kind of financial arrangements there are, what, why that, I mean, I'm. what kind of financial arrangements there are, what, why that, I mean, I'm, I'm curious as to the history on the donation of the property and why that property would have been donated in, in such a manner as to have it still be owned by the university and by the corporation. It just seems odd when it's, when it's not an associated entity.
So, so if I may just clarify one or two things, just maybe it'll help, and if not, we'll, we'll go dig deeper. So in nineteen seventy-five, uh, all of that land that is currently under control, the Botanical Gardens for University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, uh, over in that area behind Gimble was owned by the Gimble Corporation. They, they donated it to the university, to the state for the university's purposes. They carved out for themselves for their own use, a two acre and change parcel on which to build the castle. In the course of doing that, they created for themselves, um, an ingress and egress, uh, access easement along that area that now has that gravel road that connects to the, uh, to the neighborhood. They failed to, uh, clean up all of the different, um, other existing utility arrangements on the property. And so now we're, they're asking for us to do that, and now it seems to make sense to do that. There, there's no harm. We've been in discussion with them for some time. I think we can, if you, if there's further detail you'd like to have, we can get it for you.
I would, if that's okay.
Sir, are these, um, existing, um, sewer line easements or utility easements right now where they're, they're running? Or are they looking to dig and, and put, uh, new easement, new, uh, utilities in the ground?
Yes, uh, so, so there's currently, we're, they're currently connected to water and sewer lines that are not in an easement. They're on our property, but they're not in an easement. And so they're abandoning those and moving them to where the newies, but will be, will exist to, to connect them with a true easement that gives them all those rights of access. Did I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, this is standard in, in my business. You've got a, um, a road easement across there. And then you've got utility easements that would tie in as well. It's normal. The only thing that you'd be looking for is if those utility easements or easements affected where you may want to place a structure might be impacted by the easement. And I'm assuming you've vetted all that and there's.
That, that's right. The Botanical Garden controls all that property back there. It's intended to be, the slope is really bad, first of all. But second of all, it's intended to be ongoing, uh, use, uh, by the Botanical Gardens for just, uh, just wooden.
I, I would be inclined to approve it just because they, they were generous in donating the land to begin with. It's a typical easement. I know there's concerns about it, but I, I think it sounds like those have been vetted, but whatever, if there's additional information.
I'd like a little additional information, if that's okay. Yeah. Um, so I, I've moved to table this until our next meeting, and we can maybe take it up even at the special meeting for the budget. Uh, but I'd like a little more information. If that's alright. Do I have a second on that? Second from Codis. Any discussion further? All those in favor, aye? Aye, opposed? Alright, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Trustee Blaine on that, reminding me of that. I appreciate it. Thanks, sir. And, uh, Vice Chancellor Knutman on the budget. Thank you.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair. Um, today I want to walk through, uh, and highlight, uh, our, our, our budget recommendations for your consideration. First, want to note that this is for your review. We, 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 uh, appreciate that this is, uh, requires a, a we want to give, provide adequate time for you to review. Similar to last year, the expectation would be we would take this up potentially for action at a special meeting in April. So with, with that said, uh, one, this budget invests in our top priorities. It is balanced and it continues a commitment to transparency. And so we, we've really moved forward in terms of being able to show additional dollars. Before I get into some of the detail, I do want to acknowledge the, the work across the campus. This doesn't happen without a tremendous amount of effort from, from the campus. In particular, I do, do you want to, do you want to note Steve Agostini, Jessica Maitland, Sherry Olson, Lindsay Farland, uh, in our central office and in our finance team, just their, their work. And then all the campus CFOs and, and, and leadership, uh, put a tremendous amount of effort into this. So, uh, the schedule, we started back in October, really fast forward to the second to last, uh, dot there. We talked a little bit already about the schedule. We are at the stage now where we are, we're, we're in the process of Board of Trustee review and then hopefully approval in, in, in April timeframe in time to be able to get to the Board of Governors for their review at the May Board of Governor meeting. So the, this process and how it works, and I think it's important to just start with, why do we do a budget? The goal, we are, this is really a process about ensuring we're putting scarce funds and they are linked to our top priorities. Uh, the importantly, this is year three. We, we've, we've now done this a couple of years, the third year, we're starting to build some history. We're starting to be able to look at trend, at least on the budget side. In terms of the overall level of requests across campus, um, there's a hundred and twenty-five million dollars in requests. Um, that's overstated slightly, uh, that there's some capital in there. If you remove that capital, it's probably under a hundred million. And it was concentrated really in a, in a few, few areas. Uh, the bulk of the work is in the meetings that I referenced. We had thirty plus meetings with units. I, I, I will say it's a big investment of time, but it's also really, really helpful just to have that opportunity to, to review, uh, fiscal challenges, opportunities and, and priorities. So before we look at the numbers, just want to note a couple of things. So yes, so there's some additional, additional year of data. We now have a, a little bit of a comparison. It's, but, but before we start looking at year over year, year, this is the third year versus others. I think it's worth, um, just a note of caution about interpreting that. Um, there, there really are, are, are some, some things, I think there's some really key factors that influence what those year-over-year changes look like. The first being just the timing and the newness of, of when we put together the twenty-four budget. Remember, the budget you approved in fiscal year twenty-four was before the legislature acted, so legislative funding changes that. There were also projections at a point in time, so those were projections, uh, based on, on some. We, we're, we're continuing to work on this to improve our accuracy on those pieces, but those don't influence kind of the year-over-year comparison. Uh, the other thing is just changes in how we organize the data and what's, what's included in what categories. Some of that changes every year. It's starting to settle down some. There was a lot of movement year one to year two. Now we're in year three. There is a lit, still a little bit of change in there. Some of it even driven by the system office and what's included in those areas. So, uh, here we're looking at the total UNC Chapel Hill, uh, budget. And I want to note a few, few items for you, uh, in, in this table. So, so one, um, if you look to the far right-hand column, you'll see our total revenue, total expense. So our budget about four point two billion dollars. I think it's worth pausing for a second just in noting the scale of the enterprise. Uh, you, you know, even, even when you get down even to the unit level, this is the entire university. When you get down to the unit level, even, for example, Keenan Flagler Business School, their budget is larger than half of the UNC system schools. And that's our, what, third largest academic unit. Um, again, the scale very different here, the complexity of the institution different. The format you see is really driven, this is the same format used across the UNC system. So you'll see, uh, major revenue categories appropriation down. Then you see expenses, uh, major expense categories in rows. Um, obviously the largest being salaries and, and wages. In the columns, you see really general fund, auxiliary, overhead receipts, and then restricted trust funds. Yeah, I, I think instead of focusing on those titles, I think you, what you really see is the, the, the diversity of our mission at UNC Chapel Hill reflected in those columns, really that general fund being kind of where our academic, principally our academic classroom work happens. The auxiliary trust fund, I think one thing that stands out, a lot of times when you think of UNC Chapel Hill, you might think of only the academic enterprise. It's actually a smaller sliver of the overall financial enterprise, auxiliary being very large, as you can see in those numbers in that column. Um, that includes, you know, housing, dining, parking, um, our faculty practice, other, other components there. And then as you get to the right overhead receipts, restricted trust funds, you see the, the, the size of our research enterprise, also our fundraising influence those numbers. Um, a couple of observations to draw your attention to in this table. One, just the appropriation number, six hundred seventy-one million dollars. That's up significantly from last year. It's also incredibly sizable when you look across higher education. Again, uh, we, incredibly appreciative for the level of support that we receive from the legislature at the institution. It certainly contributes to the affordability of the institution and our ability to, 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 to be successful. Um, also draw your attention to the contracts and grants, the, the number again continues to increase, reflecting just the growth of our research enterprise. Uh, and, and one other, one other note on the scholarship and fellowship, if you look to that, to the right, you'll see three hundred forty-two million dollars. Um, that is, if you compare to last year, you, you might see a, it, it looks much, much lower. That is really more of, again, I, I talked about different items being moved year to year. Federal student loans used to be captured in that area last year per system office direction. That's been removed, so it, it distorts that picture or something. So that's the, the, the kind of bigger picture table of, of how UNC Chapel Hill's dollars look. I think it's also very instructive to look at by unit and to get a sense of, of how our, our funding looks. First, I, it's, it's worth noting. Yes. Yes.
Trustee Blaine. Hey, Trustee Blaine, will you turn the mic on? Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, Trustee Bolick, if you couldn't, uh, hear me earlier. Um, the, uh, you've kind of quantified, you know, taxpayer support, auxiliary support, overhead F and A receipts. What, what, what's an example, source of funds for us on the restricted trust funds?
It, a lot of our contracts and grants for federal research or state, state-funded research, and then also, uh, our gifts on the. Is it okay to jump into the unit detail? I, I, I love, I love this slide. I think sometimes it's a little, it's a little overwhelming looking at tables of numbers. And so I, 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 I think sometimes it's a little easier to get your arms around the budget just looking at, at, at the fund types and how it breaks down by the units at our institution. Again, diversity, complexity of the institution. We have a separate scale needed for School of Medicine off to the left. You see that again, just, just in terms of, of scale. And you, you also have a group of, uh, uh, we're really grouped here, the academic schools you see from College Arts and Sciences to the School of Dentistry. Then you have our, our kind of administrative structure in the middle, and then off to the right, you see our auxiliary units. I, I think what's, uh, what's interesting, of course, you know, on the, the, as we look at that blue general fund piece, again, that's that, that academic, um, the, the classroom work, you see a lot of that focused. Look at the heavy reliance in the College Arts and Sciences, as would be expected. And our, and our academic schools and units, you see a heavier reliance in those areas. Auxiliary, when you look at auxiliary, the, the darker shade, you see that one, School of Medicine Faculty Practice, uh, sticks out. You also see that the executive education at Keenan Flagler Business School. You can see the dentistry faculty practice. You can see a sizable component in their, their bar. You also see on the facilities, uh, line, number one, that's not three hundred plus million dollars of facilities enterprise. Energy services is in there and a large component of that. And then that's, that's what's actually reflected in the, the auxiliary component there. And then, and then lastly, you know, when you think about, uh, research activity, um, you can see that really in the overhead and then that also the restricted trust fund colors. And one, on the F and A, you can see the units generating a lot of that, especially comparatively what jumps out of the School of Public Health, uh, School of Pharmacy, and certainly, you know, the college and School of Medicine all, all jump out in terms of, of, of their F and A generated in the, the research side. You also see that F and A used appropriately. Um, a lot of the support services and the administrative support services of the institution, and you can see that in the administrative units, that yellow component kind of as part of their funding type again, and so again, I think it's a, 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 a good picture on how the university kind of, kind of fits together and what it looks like by, by unit in terms of the, the relative different flavors of funding. So this budget process, um, I mentioned, we started back in October. What we, what we asked for are requests and, and priorities that really align with these, these four items listed at the top. Addressing state priorities, supporting Carolina's excellence, enhancing campus safety and accessibility and solidifying investments. And you see the major areas kind of listed there. Of, of course, we've talked a lot about school data science and school for civic life and leadership. I will spend more time on each of those in a minute. Um, we're always mindful of the system office and legislative requests and, and what's needed um, from, from the institution. Um, I will talk more about the tuition and appropriation allocation model in a minute. One of the pain points for the campus is, is just when we start up new academic programs, how do we have funding to bridge and be able to, to, to at least help with that initial, those initial costs? So we have, this budget does set aside some funding for that. Um, graduate student support does set aside some funding for that. On the research equipment and, and, and support, we've talked some about just at times it can be a very big challenge to have the dollars necessary to, to purchase some of the equipment that, that may be beyond the means of an individual school or unit. And so the ability to think about that, uh, across the enterprise, this, this, this funding is intended to do that. Um, AI, we, we set aside some dollars to, to be able to, to start to pilot and start to, to, um, pilot some of the work in that area. Um, I will spend more time on investment and security cameras and after-action review. That's been a big priority. Cybersecurity, again, a component of investment in risk. Um, I, I, I will note IT is, is being able to, to fund those investments within their existing budget. Uh, accessibility project funding moving forward, and then also administrative efficiency and savings. I'll talk a little bit more about that, that item as well, but that, that's always something fiscal responsibility and ensuring that, that we are, are, uh, mindful of administrative efficiency and savings. And then lastly, the, probably the biggest or, or maybe the item requested most frequently from many of the academic units was help and assistance on startup funding. And so we do have some funds centrally to, to be able to, to help and assist on, on that point. So a couple of these I wanted to highlight. Again, I mentioned the School of Civic Life and Leadership. Uh, you know, in February, uh, the minor in, is, was approved, the minor for, in, in Civic Life and Leadership for the fall semester approved. And I know you're going to hear a little bit more in-depth report on this later today, but just a couple of the highlights. Um, Jed Atkins approved as the Director and Dean effective March, March twenty-eighth, so, so coming up here. And as we think about the funding and where the school is positioned, if you'll remember, and again, deeply appreciative of the legislature in terms of two million dollars non-recurring support for this current year, two million dollars non-recurring support for next year. This budget matches that level of support next year for, uh, for the School for Civic Life and Leadership. But the, really the goal ultimately is, is to get to an eight million dollar, um, um, in the near term. And so that's going to be the, the opportunity and the resource need kind of moving into fiscal year twenty-six. To move down to School of Data Science or Data Science and Society, uh, in, in January of this year, uh, the online of Masters in Data Science launched. Um, in, in February of this year, the Board of Governors just approved a BS and a BA in data science. So some progress on, on course and on degree. There, we also made significant progress in terms of faculty hiring. And, and again, when we think about resource needs for the school, um, again, deeply appreciative to the legislature in terms of seven and a half million dollars recurring. That's an incredible jumpstart for the school. Um, two and a half, so in our, in our, in our budget for this year, two and a half million non-recurring on top of that for this year. Um, so in, in a good position to start, but the, the ultimate goal there is to get to twenty million dollars. And so we'll be, you, you really thinking about how we bridge that gap and continue to, to provide the necessary resources for, for the school to grow. I, I've talked about the prioritization for campus safety and, and risk mitigation, uh, in the past about, about how this budget prioritizes that. We're, we are, uh, we are excited that the four million dollar legislative request for camera upgrades was included in the system office and the Board of Governor approved list of priorities. Not every individual campus within the system had an item included in that list, so we were, we were very pleased to see that included. Um, this budget does set aside some dollars to help, help, um, be able to address the after-action review recommendations. That, that work is being finalized right now. You will hear more about it at the next Board of Trustee meeting and, and we'll, we'll be sharing some of the, some of that information with the public. You will hear more about it at the next board of trustee meeting and, and we'll, we'll be sharing some of the, some of that information with the public. But I also want to note that, that there has been a lot of work done on campus safety, the campus, you know, whether that was installation or at least movement toward installation of license plate readers, a new, new police cars and a take home policy there. We've increased trainings, certainly have installed more security cameras. And as I mentioned, we have a, a much larger request to be able to improve that even more. The Carolina's safety, the ready safety app has been improved. And I think more importantly, it's been there, but we've been promoting that. And there's been a lot more usage of that. And then just on the IT security side, it's been, it's been prioritized as well.
And trustee Codis, Vice Chancellor Knopfman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but trustee Codis did have a question on that.
So I'm glad we're putting that in and, and all the measures that have been taken recently and not to beat it to the horse here. But Chancellor Fault did reallocate two and a half million dollars that would have gone towards cameras previously. And we need to make sure that we're not moving funds around that take away from campus safety. This is a very important request. And I think for all parents out there that are sending their kids off to school, they want to know their kids are safe. And I hope that we'll be able to get this, but if not, I would hope that the university would find alternate funds to ensure campus safety. Hopefully this will be approved as part of the request. But again, that needs to be a commitment at the university level.
Thanks for that comment. Another key feature of this budget is a new allocation model. As you all are aware, there've been a lot of work done at the system level to, to, to re-engineer how the state allocates money for enrollment growth. And they completed their work a couple of years ago. And, and what this, what this new allocation model does is it really, it rolls forward that, that component. So the dollars that are generated for North Carolina resident student credit hours at the institution, the dollars that the state appropriates for that kind of rolls forward as part of that model to the individual school. So, so one, it promotes alignment on the appropriation side, but then also on the tuition side. How we allocate tuition has been non-standard. It's, 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 it differs greatly across the institution, how much tuition an individual school might keep versus center. And that share has been, has been a little bit all over the map. And so this standardizes how that will work moving forward. We, we think it really addresses a lot of longstanding issues. One, it's just a better link between revenue generation and distribution. Two, it greatly improves predictability. Probably the biggest pain point I heard from, from schools and leaders is, is just not having control or ability to plan and, and think about the predictability around funding. So I think this is, this goes a long way toward helping to address that. Incentives are improved. And then, and then I think lastly, the, the point about these, the provost and I have heard a, a, a number of requests for, for one-off type of agreements on tuition share and how those might work for individual programs. And we're able to just be, you know, much more of a standard operating process for how we handle that, which I think is a, a big improvement in terms of efficiency and how we, how we operate. And, and I, and I do want to thank the provost for his, his leadership on this as well. He's been a great partner as, as part of moving this forward. And, and again, I mentioned Lindsay Farling before, but, but she put in an incredible amount of effort to move this initiative forward. And I, I think there's, the amount of transparency, the amount of data and the amount of engagement was really unprecedented on how much work through this project. Yep.
Can you get us a chart to let us see who the, how the standardization is, how it's benefited or hurt each school?
I can. I'd be happy to follow up with you with some more detail on that. This first year implementing, we had really a hold harmless in effect. So, so no school is disadvantaged. So, so we thought that was important just as we implement initially. We, we recognize it, it's tough because we're starting this at a certain point in time. Some schools may have been on the, on an uptick in terms of enrollment. Others may have just had an uptick and are coming down. And, and we wanted to be sensitive to that, that timing issue, which is really, really difficult. We can, we can do that.
Vice Chancellor Knopfman, so have, has the, where, where are we in terms of the system offices effort to look at ROI on our programs? And, and are you keeping a watch on that in terms of future budgeting issues?
We, we are, and I, and I, and I think, I appreciate that question because it's a compliment to this. This is, when we're thinking about this, this is really rationalizing a little bit on how revenue gets allocated. It's not the whole equation, obviously. Some of, some, to really be able to think about expense and, and what that looks like in terms of return. You really need to look at some of the expense piece and that ROI effort that the system office sponsored is, is directly responsive to that piece. Each institution within the system just supplied recently a report to the, to the system on the performance of their low performing programs. We had a list, it, it was, was it 12? 13, 13 programs listed in that group. We supplied some of that information and, and we've been kind of working through this with the system. I will say the system is, is looking at policy change in this area to really, I think strengthen the review at campuses. And also I think there's a component where the board of trustees would actually be in a position where they'd be looking more, more involved in the approval of some of the review in those pieces.
Trustee Bronner.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Knopfman. This topic is near and dear to my heart, as, as you know. I think the advances you and your team have made on the revenue side of these are incredible. What should we expect on the expense side? And when should we expect it in terms of a better reporting and understanding of that?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. We, we've talked about this as being really a phase one, a phase two, being more focused on, on the accountability metrics and some of the performance. We, we would like to get a better handle on cost, what it really costs per, per credit hour across the institution. We've even had some conversation with Keenan Flagler Business School about being able to partner, on being able to look at that. We don't have a set timeline in mind yet, but I, we, we do want to tackle that. And we have talked about that being part of the next phase. We do have a work groups already set up to start thinking through this and working through it. I'd be happy to report back on a more concrete timeline.
Trustee Turner.
Yeah, just curious connectivity to development. This might be a question for Vice Chancellor Andreessen. Regarding our budget priorities, to what degree are our development priorities the same list or different? I'm just curious, just connectivity. As you talk about budget priorities, but then we also have development. I know we have a development update later today, but what's the process and connectivity there?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. I really, I really appreciate that. I, I would describe it as that relationship has strengthened and it's improved a lot in terms of just our ability to, to. I think there's awareness of, of where we have pressures on the institution on the funding side and where there might be opportunity in development, whether that's in financial aid, some areas like that, that have, that may not have been prioritized, even on some of the capital. Mike will probably be able to, to go into more detail with, with you all about this. But easy, you know, we've even had, and we're moving forward with a position that would even look at R and R and, and actually being able to, to raise funds to be able to help address those needs. Because we recognize relying on the state is not going to be a strategy that's sufficient to be able to address some of these priorities, that, that longstanding challenge. And so not solely doing that. And so we want to be able to, to be able to look at other teams.
Trustee Jones.
Vice Chancellor Knopfman, a quick question. How does this budget impact our ongoing support for the College of Arts and Sciences and support for the humanities in general?
Well, the college, a couple of areas of funding, they're the largest beneficiary of some of this new allocation model. So the slide we're looking at, a significant amount of dollars are going there and appropriately so. They, they shoulder the bulk of the burden associated with enrollment in terms of, especially on the undergraduate credit hour components. The other area the college gets funding for in this budget, as I mentioned, the school for civic life and leadership and the, the matching, the legislative $2 million non-recurring, that's also a part of the college budget. But I think there, there are, I think there's, this budget is in, in many ways more directly responsive to some of the enrollment pressure and some of the pressures that, that the college has faced than, than, than we have in the, in years past. So in, in area I wanted, I wanted to address was, was, as we think about resources and resource allocation at the institution, it's important to think about administrative efficiency. And wanted to show this, some information on, on our administrative burden. And here we're looking at administrative intensity. It's a measure from Helio Campus, which is a, a, a group that benchmarks higher ed institutions and, and looks at every job classification, job duty, and goes through that systematically and really identifies and categorizes that spend as part of either labor, as part of administrative or non. So you can look at, so what you're looking at is overall spending on labor and the focus on the percent that actually goes to the administrative component of this. And you can see how UNC Chapel Hill compares on the left. So you can see these are some of our, our peers. We, we tend to be below that benchmark average significantly. The other thing worth noting is you look over to the right, just the trend, we, we've been trending down. Now, I, I don't want to make too much out of that in the sense that I think that's largely driven by some of the turnover issues that we've had in some, in some of the administrative areas. I, I would expect in years, years moving forward that to either level out or kind of move, move back up some. But again, I, I think the trend has been generally, it has not been growing, I think is very, very safe to say. Another, another point I want to make on this is just, there's a lot of alternative measures of administrative burden out there that you, that you often see in the media. I, I would recommend caution in interpreting administrative burden. A lot of times these are broad categories of, of spending, very, in, in many ways, they're blunt instruments. They combine administrative spend, but they don't exclude the administrative spend particularly focused on research. So if you are an enterprise with a large research component like UNC Chapel Hill, all of that spend is captured. Oftentimes then it's divided by the number of students, FTE. Our student body is relatively small for the research that we produce, especially for a, a, a big flagship. So when you do that equation, you're going to see distorted numbers or numbers that, that, that paint a certain picture. And again, I, I would just recommend caution in looking at that kind of information. I do think this is a more accurate picture generally. This look, this goes from the ground up from every individual employee at the institution categorized. I don't think this is the whole picture. And I, this is not to suggest that there is not improvement that we can make on the, how we operate administratively. And I, I'll acknowledge the, the conversations I've had with Chair Bolick and his interest in IT. And I think he, he is, he has encouraged us to look more deeply at this. We did spend time assessing how we compare to our peers. And, and we can see where, where we spend considerably more. A couple of areas really stood out, whether that's application development or user support. Areas where we spend less and we see the IT security and how we're, how we're reinvesting there and really prioritizing that. That's starting to shape how we're putting together our policy and how we're prioritizing. We've, we've got some ideas that are responsive to those, those things out there to the right you see in goals. And we're going to be really seriously taking, doing, doing some work in this area with, with the idea of being, having some recommendations more complete on this in the FY '26 budget.
I, I do want to say something about that, if that's okay. And Vice Chancellor Knopfman and Chair Pryor and I, and Chancellor Roberts and I have had discussions about IT and the, the sort of the push and pull between centralized and decentralized IT across our campus and where we might could find some duplicative services and some, some savings and, and be more efficient. So I, I look forward to moving forward with that. I think, I, I think we need to be on top of it. And I think the chancellor's work group focusing on AI may provide some insight and help and assistance on that IT question as well. If you want to maybe speak to that, I don't.
By all means, it's, it's an important area of spending. You've, Chair Bolick been consistent in encouraging us to think about ways in which we can be more efficient. In particular, as you say, with respect to centralization versus every unit running their own, their own IT infrastructure. And so I think important progress has been made in this regard and, and, and we'll continue to focus on it.
And I appreciate the focus on the budget. Thank you. Anybody else have anything on that? Okay.
As we, as we wrap up, I thought it was important to, to walk through a little bit. The system office had, had some suggestions and training for trustees earlier this year. And they really suggested these questions to make sure that boards of trustees are engaging with, with institutions and thinking through and making sure the budget is responsive on each of these pieces. And I wanted to walk through each of these with you just at a high level. But, you know, does this budget promote affordability? I think yes, the tuition, if you think about our tuition and fee policy, tuition for residents will stay flat for the eighth year in a row here. We have, we continue to have the lowest fee burden in the UNC system by a considerable margin. Again, that's the underpinnings of the, of the budget in terms of affordability. Are, are there strategic investments to achieve university goals? The entire process is set up to be responsive to this question. We had those goals that we talked about in terms of those four. We talked about how the different investments we have aligned with each of those areas. Does the budget reflect efficiency efforts? Yeah, I showed some data, big picture on administrative savings, but this budget also has lease savings booked in it. It also, we were going to make progress on some restructuring and reorganization as well in, in the budget. Are there funding pressures addressed? Yeah, I think of some of the primary funding pressures being, you know, one being enrollment. Enrollment and the burdens associated with that. We now have a new allocation model that's directly responsive to that in terms of where, where funding goes. We talked to some about the most requested area being startup funds. So this new program support, again, this budget puts, puts funding dedicated to those areas where we're seeing some pressures. And then, you know, lastly, that the question on changes in fund balance, are they strategic? One thing we did not get into, and if you, when you go through the individual tables, what you will see when you look at the auxiliary operations, dining, housing, parking areas like that, you will see fund balance. You will see those units spending into their fund balance. That's planned, that is planned and that is intentional. It's catch up from post pandemic. They've been able to build up a little bit of the, the fund balance and then really reinvest in some capital and deferred maintenance that's been put off. And so I, I, I do think those are strategic. So I wanted to at least address those questions. And, and, and then lastly, just kind of leave with, our work is not done in this area in terms of what we're doing on, on how we, how we budget, how we manage fiscally, you know, we're continuing to try to, to move in, in, in this process to mature. I think we're, we're still really very much in the early stages of this. But we, we want to get better, especially our capacity to, to do analysis and forecast. The, the governance component, we're highly decentralized. We recognize the need to strengthen policy and, and just to make sure there's best practice in place. And then, then lastly, I think that, that key component on improving the linkage between resources and performance. You know, I talked about the new allocation model. I think it goes a step in that direction, but we really, you know, we talked earlier about the shift. We, we're really going to need a shift to expense and, and what we're getting through the investments. You know, right now we've, we've definitely improved the transparency on how, how dollars are allocated at the institution. But I think you're going to see some evolution of that moving forward. Happy to answer.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Chair Pryor, yes, sir.
I, I'd just like to point out that when trustee Meekins, Chair Bolick and I got on the board, there was a different finance VC, your predecessor who left, took another job. And you were named interim in 2020, as I recall. I happened to be the trustee rep to the search committee. And it was quite obvious to me who the best candidate was for the job. And the discussion was, well, Nate had always been kind of the number two. Was he ready to be the number one? And it was very obvious to a lot of others that he was, including Trevon Eubanks, who has worked with six previous vice chancellors of finance and operations. And it was so obvious, but we still had the search anyway. And I know that interim Chancellor Roberts was none too surprised at who the best candidate was. And for everybody else on the board who now kind of takes for granted that we have a level of detail on the budget and the information that we're provided in volume, it used to be very different. And no offense to anybody. And no offense to anybody previously, but it was sort of like, here's the budget, you're supposed to approve it. And I won't make any comment about the governance on that, Governor Fraley, but that was a markedly different time than today, and the level of information is largely a credit to your work. So thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor Roberts?
Chair Fraley, sorry, Chair Pryor, thank you very much for those comments. I just want to echo that the, this should be a tremendous source of comfort to everyone who cares about the sound financial management of this institution. Tremendous progress has been made. It's very difficult to overstate the difficulty and complexity of this work, particularly around the allocation model that's been done by Vice Chancellor Knufman and his team. So I just want to commend him and his team and thank him for this work. And I think it serves the university well, serves the system and the state well. And as he says, there continues to be room for improvement. Tremendous amount of progress has been made already, so thank you.
Trustee Blaine?
Chair Bolick, Vice Chancellor, what's the process moving forward on approving the budget?
So it's my intention that this budget exercise be treated like we did last year, which was, members have received this information today and will have a chance to review the all funds budget. We will not be asking the board to approve the budget today. I've talked to Chair Pryor, and we will have a special meeting in April to do that, to give board members an ample opportunity to look at the budget and take a deeper dive because it's our responsibility to be fiduciaries on that and take a look as opposed to having it presented with an approval. I thought last year it worked really well, and I think Chair Pryor agreed. We've had the discussion, he agrees with that. So that's, is to get information today and then have Vice Chancellor Knufman come back to the board seeking approval.
Chair Bolick, there's one thing I'd like to ask you all to look at. I think it's kind of an elephant in the room here. It's my belief that it is likely that the Board of Governors or the state legislature will follow Florida's path as it relates to DEI this year. I actually think that's the right decision. I think what I've seen, in my opinion, is that DEI creates and exacerbates problems on this campus and doesn't solve them. So I hope that they do move forward in eliminating DEI. I think it's the right thing to do. But I think rather than us be caught flat-footed, I would suggest that we start to develop a contingency plan for that expectation. And it's my belief, as you've said, that a budget is a statement of a university's priorities and that if we lose, if we have to move that funding from DEI, that we ought to look at doing things like increasing graduate student salaries and funding some programs to try to get the 10% of students that fail to matriculate and get a diploma on our six-year graduation rates back and finished. So that's something as we move forward in this process, I would suggest that we plan
Trustee Cottis?
I would echo many of Jim's comments. I think we need to, we need to be looking at administrative functions and bureaucracy and deciding if that's really the most effective way to affect change. If you take, let's say, the DEI efforts with, I think approximately 37 employees in that category, and you use an average of 100 grand a pop for fully loaded cost, that's 3.7 million. That could be 370, $10,000 scholarships or stipends. Be a lot of mentoring efforts out there. And I'm generally in favor of taking the money or the buckets of money we have in bureaucracy or layers and working to streamline operations, figure out how we can cut costs. You've heard us say a lot about cutting costs, whether it's roofing or other items, but mission creep and administrative bloat is another area where we need to target and make sure we're addressing root problems rather than masking them. And I think that the sentiment for a lot of folks around the state is that DEI is causing more divisiveness than coherence at the university level. And so I think it is a proper target to consider for reallocation of those funds to better
Trustee Meekins, are you wanting to say something?
I am. I would just say this, I think the topic we're discussing is not an easy one, and it's not one I think that we might all agree upon. And I think it's a policy issue that the Board of Governors is going to be addressing, apparently, and I think we need to wait for them to give us the direction that we need before we start making decisions and thinking about where we're going to allocate money. I don't think it would be good for our school to do that at this point in time. I don't think the Board of Governors would appreciate us trying to jump the gun on those kinds of issues. And I think it would be best for us to do what we want to and as far as planning, but let's see where the policy goes before we start addressing it ourselves. And I don't know how the chancellor feels about that, but that's my view.
Okay. I, you know, I tend to agree 100% with what trustee Blaine said, particularly with respect to contingency planning and taking a look at where we have allocated funds in our budget to DEI efforts. If there is a change in policy that funds it, we should be prepared. My personal belief is that DEI, and for that matter CRT, has caused, in the world of academia, has caused more distrust in higher education than any other effort in modern times. And so I agree that we need to take a look at it, and it would be helpful to have the numbers available so that when we look at the budget and we go to approval, we know where those dollars are. And I think the suggestion, I believe it was trustee Cottis, the suggestion that we take a look at alternative placement of those dollars. I know that student body president trustee Everett has been a big proponent of student wellness. That might be an area where we could reapportion dollars also to help with graduation rates and maybe even look at housekeeper salaries across campus as a place to reallocate dollars as well. I find the DEI efforts to potentially create additional administrative bloat. I know you said that we're doing pretty good, but I think there's administrative bloat in the DEI space, and I think it does tend to create a more divisive environment than we need at the university. So I agree with trustee Blaine that we need to take a hard look at this and look to where we could reallocate those funds. So I'd ask you to do that, if you're willing to do that, from the budget office.
No, I appreciate that feedback. And I, just a couple notes on this topic. One, definitional issues are really difficult here when defining what is DEI spend. You know, is it inclusive of compliance activities? Other things really have a big impact on the scale and size and how it's comparable. The one report we do produce annually to the Board of Trustees per UNC System Policy Manual, the most recent one showed we spend about $1.8 million in personnel spend, 1.4 million funded by state funds, 2.3 million total. So, and that captures, just to clarify for the board, that captures individuals or personnel with greater than 50% of their time dedicated to DNI functions. So that's the definition they used, and that's certainly a significant amount of money. But also contextually, in the context of our overall salary and benefit area, it's a small fraction of the university overall spending on personnel. I do think it's worth noting too, just a note for the board, and we'll continue to, we can continue to follow up and look at this more. For comparison, the System Office did a report in 2018 on DNI spending, and this was kind of the baseline for everyone that's done these reports since, the annual reports. And they showed roughly a similar level of spending for UNC Chapel Hill comparatively. So we had, at that point in time, we were, I guess, at $1.3 million in personnel spend. So again, that was five or six years ago at that point in time, but a similar, and at least that has the benefit of having the same definition over that time, so we're able to track. I do think it's worth noting too, that looked at all the system schools. UNC Chapel Hill was not the largest spend in the UNC system at that point in time. And there were several that were above us per constituency. So we, again, we can continue to follow up on this, just significant definitional issues in terms of putting our arms around.
I think your point is taken with respect to definitional issues, but my preference would be that we focus on the core mission of learning and research at the university and understanding that some of these necessary spends may be, there may be some mix, is what I'm hearing from you there. But that is, that's why we do this budget process, and now we have a more detailed look. So I would hope that you would be able to parse that out a little better. Trustee Blaine?
I just want to clarify what I was asking. I think that this is coming. I don't argue, I actually think that in targeting some key components of DEI, it's the right thing to do. But I also understand that there are compliance, maybe Title IX, other sorts of issues that are housed in our DEI office. My concern is that if we're not prepared and we're not ready and the legislature says your DEI office is gone, we're going to be in a mess because we're going to have components of our compliance system that are necessary in order for us to get federal grants go out the door. And I think it is foolish not to be ready. So my request is that as we move into this budget process, that we really start thinking about this so that we can protect core functions from a broad elimination of our DEI office.
That's what I understood you to say. Trustee Blaine, we need to be prepared. Trustee Meekins, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I don't disagree that we need to be prepared, but I think just the mere fact that we're discussing this at this point in time and we're expressing our opinions as to how we feel about it, we are in some way bringing the issue before this board. And I don't think that's appropriate until the Board of Governors gives us their direction. And I don't think it's respectful to them. We've gotten a memo from them recently telling us to stay in our lane, and I think this is one area where we need to stay in our lane. Let's wait and see what they say, and then we can adapt and we can, we can meet whatever the ramifications are from any changes in our DEI. The two of you, trustee Bolick, trustee Pryor, we voted three or four years ago on our strategic plan, which included a significant part of it, the importance of DEI. And I don't think we just all of a sudden changed that opinion or our board's policy in the school's strategic plan without a thorough discussion on policy. And I believe that we shouldn't do that until the Board of Governors tells us to or gives us that directive. That's my opinion.
Trustee Cottis?
Yeah, I mean, some of the numbers that are buried in the budget in here include the SFFA cost, which, you know, counting the final pay for the other side's attorneys now approaches $30 million. I think we're going to see more of those that will come up. And if we don't get ahead of this, we're going to be spending money that could be spent educating students defending lawsuits for violating people's rights to not be discriminated against nor granted preferential treatment. And I think this is exactly why we're here. We're supposed to tackle the hard topics, not to punt and give it to the BOG or even the legislature. We're here to make decisions, and sometimes they're tough ones. So I think it's entirely appropriate. I think the numbers that Nate mentions are when there was a self-reported study. So, you know, that's self-reported with people asking about it, let's say, from the legislature or Board of Governors specifically about how much are you spending? Think maybe that might be understated. I prefer some of the data that I've seen that tracks classification of individuals based on responsibilities, more so because I don't think that's as influenced by who's asking for the amount versus actual accurate data.
I would just ask if you could come back with those data points so that we have a level of preparedness with respect to any policy changes that may be handed down or any policy changes that this board may intend to take on its own merit with respect to approval of the budget at the special, at a special meeting to be called by Chair Pryor in April. I do want to mention, since trustee Meekins said something about the strategic plan, I have been a vocal critic of the strategic plan because I think it tries to do too much for too many people across this campus with 28 individual points. But we're going to move on, that's a different discussion. And I look forward to maybe a new strategic plan for the university moving forward. So you're going to come back to us with some detail with respect to what we've requested on the DEI efforts and portions of the budget, and then maybe any other sort of tweaks that you want to do for approval at an April meeting? Is that?
Understood.
Okay, great. That concludes our meeting without objection. Yes, sir. Yeah, I think we did that, but just to be clear, for Mr. McClure, all of our action items, I would move that we put them on the consent agenda. Do I have a second from trustee Cottis? Any discussion, hearing, none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, this committee stands adjourned, and we'll take a five to 10-minute break.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the March Meeting of the Committee on Strategic Initiatives. As Chair of the Committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflicts of interest. If any of you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. We have a very short agenda for today, and before we get into the role, I'm going to read about policy 1300.8. North Carolina law and UNC system policy prohibit the willful interruption, disturbance or disruption of an official public meeting. Further, North Carolina law provides it as class II misdemeanor for any person refused to leave an official meeting on being directed to do so. Pursuant to these authorities, anyone who interrupts, disrupts, or disturbs this meeting will be asked to leave. If they do not leave when asked, they will be removed and may be subject to arrest. And so I would ask that if anyone does disrupt this meeting, their information is gathered by the appropriate authorities so that they can face disciplinary action. Mr. McClure, if you'll please call the role.
Chair Cottis?
Here.
Vice Chair Bryan. Mr. Brenner. Ms. Evans. Dr. Jones. Mr. Meekins. Mr. Pryor.
Here.
Mrs. White is not with us. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
First item of business is to review and approve the open session minutes of the January 17, 2024 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the open session minutes of January 17, 2024? Trustee Pryor made the motion. Trustee Bryan seconded. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, neoposed. Motion carries. We have one quick item today. It is an update on the utilization study following up on what Mr. Knufman presented, Vice Chancellor Knufman presented, and Charles Clemens will provide that update.
Thank you, Chair Cottis. I will be brief. This is first a review. We could advance the slides to the little circular charts. This is just a reminder on the classroom utilization, a little further, a little more. There we go. So these are a little difficult to read, but the red line on the outer bar shows a target, and the inner shows the actuals for hours in classroom, weekly hours in labs. There's a second slide. There's a second slide that shows, the next one, if I could see it, shows the stationary utilization. Chapel Hill is ahead of the system on some of these metrics, behind on some of the lab metrics. Efficiency is not the overall main goal of a university or of an educational process, but efficiency can serve those goals. And so rather than build new classrooms as we grow, we are starting to experience crowding in classrooms. We, we conducted a short study. This involved the registrar, Lauren DeGracia, one of my associate provosts, and a lot of help from our team. And what we found is if you, if you allow faculty to choose and students to choose when they take their classes, they'll be between nine o'clock, three o'clock, Tuesday, Thursday first, and then Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And so you have classroom utilization outside that dense window that is not too good. And that's why some of these, if you back up a slide, you can see this number. Weekly hours in a classroom, the system goal is 26.6. We're almost there at 26.4, but that's not great and, and we can actually do better. Also, if you ask faculty, where do you want to teach? They'll pick something that's a short walk from their office. So rather than let the faculty manage all that, we indulge, we indulged in some shared governance where the provost weighs in. And if you read nothing else, there's a message from the provost in your notes now from March 5th. And I'm just going to walk you through what we're doing, take questions, and then we'll be done. We sent a memo.
That's the updated materials that are the classroom utilization memos. Those were added, I think, yesterday to onboard.
Yeah. So what we did in late 2023 is two simple things. You understand that we have a standard course pattern. That is courses start at fixed times on Monday, Wednesday, Friday and different times on Tuesday, Thursday. We had some faculty who didn't like those times and for some times there's a good reason not to be in those. Other times we should not have been allowing it because it's confusing when it comes to finals. All the final times are arranged by class start time. So we did, the first simple thing we did in the process here that's unfolding is we asked that faculty start at the appointed start time unless there was some explicitly granted exception in a school. We didn't ask them to end on time because some people are doing a longer Tuesday, Thursday class on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We may get there and we may have to insist on that, but we have some other tools that we'll implement first. The second thing is that we asked our course schedulers, which are mostly student services coordinators, to get the, the classes into the system a couple of weeks before the start of the semester because sometimes they're lagging and you can't plan if you don't know what's coming. We got a little more ambitious this semester and I issued the memo that you see to the entire faculty. I've only sent about four or five things to the entire faculty because they won't pay attention if I, if I send things. I learned to ignore anything that said mass mail provost a long time ago as faculty. So what we did is we made a slight change to the standard course pattern. We had a 3:35 PM Monday, Wednesday, Friday course that ran for 50 minutes. We went ahead and made that course pattern formally a 75 minute course. So you can choose to teach a longer course two days a week and we allow the faculty to choose Monday, Wednesday, Wednesday, Friday, or Monday, Friday. Not a lot of folks choose Friday at 3:35 to 4:50, but, but it's a, it's an option. So we officially changed that. And then we added one more course to the standard course pattern, late in the afternoon, 5:05 to 6:20. Because we do have classes that run into the evening and we can use those and they're actually more popular than 8:00 AM, as you might suspect. So at the same time, we developed a couple of tools. And we asked that no more than 70% of courses be scheduled during those peak hours. And that's to force people out into these other times of the day, but it has another effect. Imagine that if every course is scheduled in the dense time and you're trying to make a schedule as a student, you soon find that you don't have the option to take a course because they were all, it's, it's like the airlines trying to schedule their flights, right? In the peak travel time, you can't get a flight and we want our students to be able to take the courses they need. So we're, we're sort of pushing these classes out of that time and we're doing that at the student services level. And Lauren and the, the office of the registrar has built a tool. So you can go in and look at your utilization much more quickly and make these decisions in real time. So it's a combination of a tool and a policy change. And my memo was just asking the faculty to cooperate when they go in to register their course time with the person who's trying to obey this memo. So that was the second thing. Then the last thing is which, which classroom are you using? There's no reason to be in a hundred person classroom with a 25 person course just for some other convenience. So we're asking that we not schedule a class whose max, whose cap enrollment cap is less than 66% of the classroom capacity that it's in. And that's the number that works out not to cause too much trouble for the small classes. So those things together, it's a, it's a pilot program. We'll experiment with that in the fall. And then we have another set of measures, which I will not divulge until the faculty see them. But the idea is to walk through a set of steps and measure the efficiency gains and see if we can get to a place where we don't just meet the system goals, but we exceed the goals. Because our, our incentive is not just to obey some rule from the system. We've had continual enrollment growth at a fairly small pace, but it's been continuous. And that will likely continue given the demand for our product. And so if we don't do this, we will have to think about building new classrooms. And that's not a cost efficient way to add capacity. So this is just a way to get our capacity up as well as comply with the system office. That's really all I wanted to report. I will take a moment because Nate thanked me to thank Nate for, especially for the allocation model that he worked with my deans to do. I think people don't realize what a profound change this is in the management tools we have. Deans more own their own destinies and can be managed to performance in a way that's not been done before. And I think it's a great step forward for this university and he's very modest, but it was very hard to do. He had all the deans in the room arguing about it and worked out something to everyone's satisfaction. And it will make a huge difference in another area of efficiency. So I wanted to thank him too. Thank you, Chair Cottis.
As part of the pilot program, something we may want to consider is the sensors that go in the ceilings that measure utilization. It's, it's relatively inexpensive now. It was expensive when it first came out and could minimize some of the reporting requirements so the faculty aren't having to fill out as much paperwork about who was in what seats. This would just measure it for them. And it's objective as well.
Yeah, thank you for that. It's a little known fact that after our prior issues on accreditation and the Wayne Stream report, we were asked to implement a class audit process, which is to check in to be sure both the instructor and the class are in a class. And we do that in a systematic way. So we have tools to, to do this even without spending more money in many of our classrooms. So I think, I think we do have ways to, to measure our success at implementation.
Right. Any other questions for, yes, just Trustee Brenner.
You mentioned in terms of utilization, that timeline is number one, proximity to office, maybe number two. To what degree is condition of space driving load utilization?
Yeah, I think, so the question was what is condition of space doing here? We try to make sure that the AV in every classroom is good. And I have to say that our classroom support services does a great job. Are there a red phone in the class? If, if I have something not working, I pick that up. It calls, it's like the bat phones. Somebody's there and then they send the guy with batteries for the microphone or whatever. But it is the case that we have some classrooms and we try to go through a checklist where desks are broken. Often ADA access or accommodations are difficult. Those are the real challenges. When you've, when you have a classroom like we've had in the philosophy building where there are no elevators. So you can't schedule it and you need to know if there's someone who needs accommodations. So I think the remediation of the ADA is probably the most important thing we can do to make sure that we have flexibility in which classroom you're in. But I will say I have certain preferences for classrooms that I would much rather teach in than others because of the modernization of the, some of them. And, and some of them are, are decrepit in some ways that need. And then there's the window units in some, some buildings. We're trying to address that too. So it's just sometimes hard to hear some of the classrooms.
Other questions for Provost Clemens? Well, that concludes our business for today and without objection, we will stand adjourned. So we Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the March Meeting of the University Affairs Committee. As Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflicts of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. Seeing none. Before we begin, I've been asked to remind everyone that North Carolina law and UNC system policy prohibit the willful interruption, disturbance or disruption of an official public meeting. Further, North Carolina law provides that it is a class two misdemeanor for any person to refuse to leave an official meeting upon being directed to do so. Pursuant to these authorities, anyone who interrupts, disturbs or disrupts this meeting will be asked to leave. If they do not leave when asked, they will be removed and may be subject to arrest. That having been said, I'll now ask Mr. McClure to please call the roll.
Chair Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Evans.
Here.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Here.
Mr. Bowlett. Mr. Bryan. Mr. Everett.
Here.
Mr. Kalapa.
Here.
Mr. Patel. Mr. Pryor. Mr. Turner. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to review and approve the open and closed meetings of the January 17th and March 1st, 2024 meetings. Do I hear a motion to approve the open and closed minutes of January 17th and March 1st? Thank you. Any opposed, or I guess I should say all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Before we get into the other items for action, I would like to share a quick story before we, like I said, before we get into the real meat of the meeting. I recently had dinner with an old friend named Alfred Hamilton. During our time together, Alfred recounted his experience with the History, Race and Way Forward Committee as it addressed potentially renaming Hamilton Hall, a building honoring Alfred's great, great grandfather, Dr. J.G. Ruhmack Hamilton. Alfred relayed his fealty to the process and willingness to accept the committee and board's decision on the matter. Although he disagreed with many committee members, Alfred felt both heard and respected throughout the process and was especially appreciative of the grace with which he was treated by Dr. Patricia Parker, Ms. Maria Estorino and Dr. Jim Leloudis. I would like to thank these individuals for their professionalism and generosity of spirit with which they approached this endeavor. I tell this story not to revive a settled process, but rather to exemplify how even the most difficult conversations can occur without unnecessary rancor when people of good heart interact with one another in a manner recognizing the inherent humanity we each possess. Carolina is a magnificent institution. Members of the Carolina community, students, graduates, faculty, staff, administration, friends, families, and even some of you, believe it or not, members of this board love this place. Dr. Parker and Alfred's mutual recognition of this emotional attachment allowed them to approach one another as fellow Tarheels rather than as mortal enemies. This small act bound them to each other and to this place in a manner that would be otherwise impossible. It is difficult to overstate the inherent beauty of their interaction. Carolina would be a boring place if she was reduced to a mere echo chamber. Differences of opinion are part of studying in a civil classroom, on a civil campus, within a civil society. It is my hope we will each continue to address one another while discussing these differences in a manner worthy of Tarheels. Thank you. I defer to Trustee Evans, who also wanted to make some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to preview for our fellow trustees and those assembled several initiatives that we are working on and to invite input and participation in the coming months. First honorary degrees and awards. You may recall at our last meeting, Chair Pryor asked me to serve as trustee liaison to the faculty committee for honorary degrees and special awards. I've had the pleasure of working closely with Dr. Lynn Blanchard, who chairs that committee, with Professor Jill Moore, who serves as Secretary of the Faculty and with a group of thoughtful faculty who dedicate considerable time to this effort. An honorary degree is the highest recognition conferred by the university. Trustee and faculty policy dictate that we honor imminent achievement, specifically those who have made outstanding contributions in scholarship and service to humanity, whose talent in the arts has enriched our lives or whose devotion to and support of our university merits our highest recognition. Nominations are solicited 18 months in advance for consideration by the committee with recommendations forwarded first to faculty council for their approval and then to our board for our approval. Recipients are notified a year in advance so they can be present at commencement the following year to accept their degree. Nominations for distinguished alumni awards are due in October and follow a similar cadence with those awards presented at University Day the following year. Any member of the university community can offer nominations and I'm happy to facilitate those from our fellow trustees. Second is the honor court. We've had conversations with the interim chancellor, his chief of staff, the provost, our board chair and other leaders regarding opportunities for refining trustee policy related to the honor court. Our focus is on non-academic cases, cases that could be tried or are tried in criminal court, but instead are also brought before the student honor court, which may have different standards for evidence, due process and sanctions, or may not be consistently applied. Federal law changed several years ago such that sexual assault cases are no longer heard by the student honor court, but are now managed by EOC as required by law. State law changed about a decade ago to stipulate that students have the right to representation by a licensed attorney if involved in honor court proceedings. Along those lines, there may be more that we can do and should do to ensure integrity and fairness in our campus proceedings. We are studying this further and will report back to this committee in May. And then lastly, on enrollment, Chair Jones, I'm very happy to be working with you, Trustee Blaine, Trustee Patel, on the chancellor's working group on enrollment chaired by Vice Provost Feldman. I'd like to commend the Vice Provost, Jason McGrath, and their team, particularly in light of the unprecedented number, I believe, 70,000 applications and express appreciation for their effort and look forward to continuing our work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Evans, for those comments. And I would like to just take a moment and thank Chancellor, interim Chancellor Roberts for his foresight and vision in terms of putting together the four committees to address some of the bigger issues that are facing the university as we go forward. Our next item for action today revolve around revisions to our bylaws. This will be presented by Chair Pryor.
Thank you. The proposed revision to the bylaws is a technical correction to align the state statute passed last year to increase the sum of our board 13 to 15 trustees. The proposed changes appear in section 1.01 of the bylaws and track the state statute by noting our board now has 15 total members, eight elected by the Board of Governors, six appointed by the General Assembly. Happy to answer any questions, but I think that's pretty straightforward.
Are there any questions for Chair Pryor? Seeing none, may I get a second? Any further discussion, debate, anything of that nature? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Our next item of business is to review and approve revised faculty salary ranges for the school ball, the school science. for the School of Law, the School of Science, Data Science and Society, and the Hussman School of Journalism and Media. Vice Chancellor Becky Manguini is here to present this item. Dr. Manguini.
Thank you, Chair Perrin. Good afternoon. It's nice to be with all of you again today. I bring to you today three sets of revised faculty ranges for your approval. And as many of you are well aware, having approved several of these requests to date, Section 600.3.4 of the UNC Policy Manual provides that the Board of Trustees has the authority to establish faculty salary ranges within different academic disciplines based entirely on relevant market data. In that spirit, the law school is seeking to update its ranges, which were last updated two years ago. They're currently ranked number 22 and on the rise, and the UNC School of Law has remained challenged to stay competitive as they rise in the rankings with competitors' salaries. During the 2023-2024 academic year, the dean extended offers to seven candidates for faculty jobs. Of those, only three accepted, with compensation being the primary driver of those who chose against coming to Carolina. Further, a faculty member in the school who was there previously left recently for George Washington University School of Law, which is ranked number 35. And they did so not because it was a better school, but because there was a significant increase in compensation provided even after an adjusted cost of living. The existing ranges right now don't present, provide enough runway to recruit top talent or to retain those who come and wish to stay. And so the law school is seeking to update its ranges to use the AAUDE, Public Faculty Salary Mean, as the midpoint to remain competitive. And this range, we have looked at the data. It is supported by the data, and it meets the requirements set forth by the UNC system. Likewise, the School of Journalism and Media seeks to update their ranges, which were last updated in 2019. For all faculty except the teaching assistant professor rank, the 75th percentile of the 2023 AAUDE salary survey mean will become the targeted midpoint. For teaching assistant professors, that targeted midpoint will become the 50th percentile of that salary data. Again, this request marks the first time the School of Journalism and Media is using the AAUDE salary data. They had previously used other sources for data that were not as specific to the fields that these faculty are in. And so we believe these are better data from which to set the ranges, and they're based specifically on these peer comparators. Like the School of Law, these ranges are supported by the data and meet the requirements set forth by the UNC system. Finally, this body is asked to approve the first set of faculty ranges for the School for Data Science and Society. Various AAUDE benchmarks are being used to set these targets. In particular, for tenured track and tenured faculty in computer science, the 75th percentile is the targeted midpoint for professors, and the 50th percentile is the targeted midpoint for the associate and assistant professors. In social sciences, the 70th percentile is the targeted midpoint for professors and associate professors, and the 75th percentile is the targeted midpoint for assistant professors. I hope you're all listening carefully because there's going to be a test at the end of this. In the Arts and Humanities, the 72nd percentile is the targeted midpoint for professors, and the 80th percentile is a targeted midpoint for associate professors. Finally, the 50th percentile is a targeted midpoint for assistant professors. When we move to fixed-term faculties, the numbers differ, largely focusing in the 50th to 70th percentile. Again, those are used on, using peer data. These proposed ranges are indeed supported by the data and meet the requirements as set forth by the UNC system. If you have no questions on any of that, I kindly request the approval of these items and for you to consider adding them to the consent agenda.
Does anyone have any questions? I guess I have a question. Can we get Dr. Ahal to come up with some kind of computer program to assist with parsing out the different.
Parsing out how these things work.
That would be a.
Happy to work on that.
Okay. I appreciate that. Hearing no, Trustee Curtis.
So in looking through all this, it looks like maybe the journalism school's the only one addressing the adjuncts. And I, you know, I keep coming back to this idea of we keep escalating pay based on kind of keeping up with the Joneses for our tenured professors, and that's fixed costs that keeps escalating substantially. Some of the starting salary bumps are, what, 40% on some of them? So there's, there's a lot of movement there. I don't feel like we're spending enough time on the grad students and the adjuncts and talking about their pay scales, especially for folks that may only be teaching one class and still having to pay for parking. So, you know, it just feels like there's a bit of a caste system here, and we're not treating those at the low end of that, I feel, appropriately. And we're also top-loading our, our cost because we'll, we'll always be keeping up. If you're always striving to be in the top 25%, and someone else keeps up with that, you're just leapfrogging, and the, the number will escalate forever.
Your point is well taken, and I'm going to agree to disagree on a couple of facts, but I, I, I think I understand what you're saying. Some units have fixed-term faculty outlined here. Others have brought them to you one-time tenure, tenure track, and then the next meeting we bring the fixed term. So it's not that we're not looking at fixed term. It's that they're not always coming to you as a single package. You may recall, two meetings ago, we did the colleges, tenure, tenure track, and then the last meeting we did the fixed term. So we are trying to get to both of them. The fixed term, however, are not necessarily addressing the adjuncts. But it's also true that this body doesn't necessarily have to approve those adjunct rates, depending on how those appointments are made. So there's a couple of pieces about where the approval lies and how those things happen. Your point about graduate students and other employees is a fair one. I am pleased to report that we are just in the process of rolling out new rates for our SHRA employees, new career bans. That has been a long-time project in tandem with the UNC System Office, and those rates have not been adjusted since 2007. So, you know, we're talking about 2019 as the last update on these faculty rates. We've got employees who've not seen their ranges updated since 2007. We're now working on the EHRA ranges. To be clear, it's true that there are always, there are markets that drive this in every field, whether we're talking about faculty, whether we're talking about football coaches, or whether we're talking about staff. The markets vary depending on the employee type. So for the SHRA ranges, when we did that exercise with the UNC system, for many of those jobs where there are similar jobs elsewhere in the state, the market was simply the state ranges or other, the, the state itself. In some places, the market needed to be the region. So we looked at the southeast, and we took similar jobs across the southeast, compared them, and then we set a number of where we want to be. So it's not that we want to be at 100% of what that market is. We want to find where we should sit in comparison. And very, actually, none of those SHRA jobs did we look at a national market. We decided that probably didn't make sense. We're now doing the exercise for EHRA jobs. Likewise, some of those will be regional and some will be national. But the idea is we're spending a lot of time going through the job descriptions and figuring out what is it we're asking people on our campus to do? And then where are we attracting candidates from? Any of us who sit in one of these jobs saying, you're attracting nationally. I came here from another state. But you might actually find the work, the, the people locally. So how do we manage to build the, the, the structure that puts people in alignment? It's a much more complicated thing, and I will tell you, there has been an enormous amount of work. I have to give enormous kudos to our colleagues at the UNC System Office and the folks with Buck Consulting who've helped us sort of think through how we build ranges that serve the entire system, so all of the campuses, and then how we position our individual units to work within them. Chapel Hill is always going to be at the top. We're going to recruit more broadly. The cost of living here is more. We figure all of those things into the range. We don't have a separate range for UNC Chapel Hill. So building those ranges is a complex piece with a whole lot of back information behind it. We need to do it for every employee type. It's a little different for graduate students because you've got an educational component built in as well, but it's all something we're looking at. So it's a really long answer to what I think is a direct question, but I, unfortunately, there's not a straight, direct answer.
And I think maybe as a follow-up to that, if we looked at the revenue generated based on the new model from the system for each class being taught and the cost associated with that, we'd maybe get a clearer picture of what's sustainable and what isn't.
Your point is very well taken. Yep, certainly worth looking at.
Trustee Everett.
Yeah, in terms of the, the computer science salaries listed out here, are those faculty ranges only for the School of Data Science and Society? Are they also for arts and sciences, or what's the distinction there?
I believe if I, if I understood the explanation, I asked a similar question. If I understood the explanation correctly, the, the ranges are the same. Depend, there are a little different focus within the units and how they're taught, and so where people will land may look different, but the ranges are supposed to be the same. I'll confirm that for you. I did ask a similar question. Any other questions?
Question.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. This may be more, I appreciate the information. It's always thorough. Thank you. Maybe more of a question for Provost Clemens, and that is, we had had discussions about the workload for tenured professors and, 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 you know, with escalating costs of tenured professors, and then the, the, the ongoing effort to try to get graduate students more money as well. I'm wondering where we are on, on sort of that look in terms of tenured professors' workload and number of classes taught per week, that kind of thing.
Yes, and I, and I may have to call up Giselle for part of this. The system has initiated a workload process, and they've made a kind of master policy. And they asked us to make a campus policy, which we brought to you already, a meeting or so ago. Where we are in the process is that's now being rolled out to each unit, and they're figuring out their local methodology for workload. And that will become the basis for each faculty member's initial start of year. What is your division of labor this year? How much is research? How much is teaching? And then it'll be a part of their review at the end of the year to make sure not just that they satisfactorily fill their workload, but that their performance, it'll be part of a performance review as well. So we're in the process of the unit-level workload policies.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Vice Chancellor Manguini? Seeing none, hearing none, may I get a motion, please, to approve these revised salary ranges? May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or debate? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? One opposed. I believe the motion will carry. So we will place that on the consent agenda for the full board's approval tomorrow. The rest of these items today are informational only. The first is a, an update from Beth Morocco, Chair of the Faculty. Professor Morocco.
Yes, I'm relieved that you don't need to vote on my, on the information. But good afternoon, and thank you for giving me some time on this very full agenda. Been watching on live stream and saw the agenda for today. I know you have a lot to cover. But thank you for allowing me this time to provide some updates and remarks regarding our faculty and faculty governance. And I apologize in advance for my scratchy voice. I was kind of hoping that this miserable rain would mitigate the effect of pollen, but doesn't seem to have helped that much. As I mentioned at the faculty council meeting on Friday, I was in Washington, DC last Tuesday and Wednesday and happened to be there right at the peak of the cherry blossoms. So it was quite a contrast to come from the gorgeous ephemeral beauty of the cherry blossoms to yellow pollen here. But I was in Washington, DC for the annual Hill Day, and that's where representatives from the nine CDC-funded injury prevention research centers, including the UNC Injury Prevention Research Centers, meet with congressional staffers and on appropriations and other committees to inform them about the work and the impact of that work of these centers, the impact that that work has on the health, well-being, and safety of the US population. Coincidentally, Dean Nancy Messonnier from our School of Public Health was also there doing Hill visits, and this was with other deans of schools of public health as part of the Association of Schools and Programs of Public Health's annual meeting. I, along with the OBCR's Assistant Director for Federal Affairs, Roxanna Kiesler, who is here, and with the help of Kelly Dockham, who's also here, also had the chance to meet with several of our North Carolina, the staffers of several of our North Carolina elected representatives, and in one case, a congressperson themselves, to describe to them the wide-ranging impact of our center's work. Everything from reducing opioid and poly-drug overdose deaths to preventing veteran suicide, to addressing adverse childhood experiences or ACEs. And I say all this not to humble brag about our center, although I'm happy to do that. But, but we're just one center of the 13 that are under the auspices of the Office of the Vice Chancellor for Research led by Dr. Gordon Larson, and just a small contributor to the vast $1.2 billion research enterprise here at UNC Chapel Hill that contributes to the North Carolina economy, the health and well-being of our citizens, knowledge, discovery, and innovation. And it provides our students with opportunities for learning, experiences, and intellectual growth. And so again, examples of all that our faculty are doing outside of the classroom that contribute. And it's just another example of the work that our faculty are doing, both inside and outside of the classroom, that benefits so many North Carolina constituencies, even people who may never visit Chapel Hill or never set foot on our campus. Of course, when I was in DC, because it was last week, there was a lot of activity and buzz about whether a budget bill would be introduced in time to avoid a government shutdown. And that made me think once again about the principles and importance of good governance and of shared governance. So this is my segue into the shared governance piece. I know that our interim chancellor will be updating you on a myriad of wonderful events and achievements of our campus, so I'm not going to do that today. I'm going to spend the rest of my time of remarks to just talk to you a little bit about an update of how our faculty governance has operated here at UNC Chapel Hill over the past nine months and to reaffirm our commitment as faculty and faculty governance to good governance and shared governance. So it's almost a reflex or a cliche to assert that authentic shared governance is critical to a healthy, well-functioning institution of higher education. But what's within the domain of shared governance? Among whom is it shared? And what's the unique role of faculty? That's somewhat a rhetorical question. We talk about this all the time among faculty and, and among our various committees and faculty council. I've noticed that in several interviews, the interim chancellor has been asked about shared governance and where, what it means. And, you know, as you know, it's a conversation that is currently under discussion and ever-evolving. So I think it's important to revisit and think about it. The AAUP defines shared governance as the joint responsibility of faculty administrations, the governing boards, to govern colleges and universities. And it further notes that the role of faculty is to have primary responsibility for such fundamental areas as curriculum, subject matter, and methods of instruction, research, faculty status, and aspects of student life which relate to the educational process. The faculty should also have a role in decision-making outside of their immediate areas of primary responsibility, including long-term planning, budgeting, and the selection, evaluation, and retention of administrators. So I'm very grateful that among these four working groups and some of the other initiatives that have been announced that there is involvement and engagement with faculty. The UNC System Faculty Assembly revised their extensive Principles of Shared Governance in 2020, and these principles are affirmed in the Code and UNC Policy Manual that actually guides all 17 UNC system schools, including UNC Chapel Hill. And speaking of the bylaws in the Board of Trustee bylaws, there's actually a sentence that reaffirms the, the principles that are enshrined in the, the UNC Policy Manual. So here at UNC Chapel Hill, we have a very strong and long legacy of faculty governance and shared governance. The faculty here approved the first set of policy recommendations that was called Faculty Legislation back then in 1947, and that was renamed the University Code of Faculty Government in 1948. in 1974. And we most recently amended it in 2022. Here's visual aid. It's on the Office of Faculty Governance website. It's not a long read, so I really encourage you to download it or read it on your iPad. And that's what guides our faculty governance today. We have a fairly decentralized governance structure. There are over 20, I think it's 22 or 23 committees, that with the exception for a very of a very small set subset, operate independently of the Faculty Council. So all of these committees are not subcommittees of the Faculty Council. They're independent committees. Some of them are elected by the general faculty, some are appointed by the chancellor or the provost, or in other situations, the faculty chair. So descriptions of the charges of these committees are included in the faculty code, and you can also find them on our website, along with the current membership of each committee, the charge, and contact information. So we have a wealth of knowledge and expertise for just about any area of faculty governance that you might have questions about. So many of these committees also have ex officio members that represent administration, staff, students, or other constituencies. And all of the committees do report annually to the Faculty Council. So we do have, and they make their recommendations to the Faculty Council. This decentralized structure allows for this really in-depth work to to happen, and it also engages a really broad, broad group of faculty in faculty governance. At last count, there were 265 individual, unduplicated faculty members involved in just the committee work. And then we have a lot of folks that that we might call on for their expertise to help us with the work of faculty governance. But we also realize that this decentralized structure can lead to fragmentation or potential redundancies. So one of our initiatives this year is that the Committee on University Governance, which is led by Professor Joy Renner, has been examining the charges of all of our committees and meeting with members to assess whether the committee's charges are still accurate, whether they need to be revised, whether there's overlap among the committees, and whether there are committees that may have outlived their original purpose. The COOG, which is the nickname for the acronym for the Committee on University Governance, will bring their recommendations to the Faculty Executive Committee, and any recommendations that involve changes to the faculty code will be introduced as resolutions and voted on by the general faculty. We're grateful for the for their work. This has been a lot of work and any opportunity that arises to streamline our work and the work of the committees. Also, in terms of faculty governance, the Faculty Executive Committee recently approved the formation of a time-limited ad hoc committee that is examining our processes and procedures for faculty deliberations and discussions. We have limited amount of time together in Faculty Council. We have eight meetings over the academic year. The meetings are two hours. While the meetings may seem long, that's really not a lot of time when you have in-depth discussions, particularly about issues that are complex, which many of these resolutions are. And so we're examining these processes and the content of these discussions, as well as how we issue resolutions and statements. In terms of shared governance, in recent years, the integrity of shared governance in institutions of higher of higher education has at times frankly felt threatened, both nationally and here at North Carolina. Increasingly, we've been reacting to actions, recommendations, policies, and even legislation that address areas that have traditionally been within the domain of faculty within the frame of shared governance. In many cases, thankfully, faculty input or feedback on these actions has been received, considered, and sometimes incorporated, or at least partially incorporated, into these actions, either contemporaneously or moving forward. And there've also been instances where faculty members and members of the administrations and others have had the opportunity to work together to craft approaches and recommendations that are tailored to our needs. And an example that's been mentioned today is the faculty workload policy, where there was a committee that was led by Dr. Giselle Corby and others with representatives from different constituencies that came up with recommendations, not only for the general policy, but then how to even define faculty workload, to include the myriad ways that faculty engage in their work. And now these policies are now being crafted at the level of the department and schools for for ways that we can document and account for our work. So finally, I also need to acknowledge that this has been an unusual year. I started in this role July 1st of 2023, and a lot has happened since July 1st, which is a bit of an understatement. And the unanticipated nature of some of this year's event has just forced us to be reactive. And I think that we've done that as well and as nimbly as possible. But moving forward, I'd like for us to be considering ways in which we can be more proactive and intentional as we go about the business, both of faculty governance, so kind of within our own house in general, and shared governance with our various partners, including the Board of Trustees. This will necessitate honest, transparent communication, trust, and willingness to consider various, including differing points of view. I appreciate the opportunities that this board has provided for faculty input, and I urge you to engage with us and continue this. Thanks for your attention. I look forward to our continued work together to ensure the authentic shared governance at UNC Chapel Hill. And go Heels.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth, for being here today. Does anyone have any questions or Professor Morocco? Seeing none. Thank you. Our next item is to hear an update from Katie Musgrove, Chair of the Employee Forum. And Ms. Musgrove, before you, I'm sorry we weren't able to catch up yesterday or between meetings this morning, but it's nice to have you here today.
It's good to see you as well. Thanks for having me out today. I'm going to also apologize for, Beth, I'm in a similar position of the pollen was aggravating me the past couple of days, so I apologize for the scratchy voice. I am also going to do something a little bit different with my remarks today, giving this group an overview of the Employee Forum, the group in which I am chair of. We've got so many new trustees that really haven't heard about us in depth before, so I wanted to just give kind of a 10,000-foot overview of this group that I've served on for about eight years of my time here as a staff member. And this group is one I'm very passionate about, and I love the work that we're doing, and I want to share it with you all today. Okay, so who are we? The Employee Forum is a group of SHRA and EHR non-faculty delegates and layman's terms staff, and we're elected by our peers. So we, as you can see here, have nine different divisions of representatives that all employee classification types are represented. So we're divided up by the type of position we serve in on campus, so that we have every type of staff member represented and have voices on our body. As you'll see here, we have approximately 75 delegates that represent the overt, and this is a staggering number, 9,700 staff here at UNC Chapel Hill. So a group of 9,700 different experiences, and it's tough to kind of capture all of the different kind of meanings behind what it means to be a staff member, but we try and do that work through the Employee Forum. All right, our mission and vision. The Employee Forum's mission is to advocate for and constructively address the challenges, needs, and opportunities of UNC Chapel Hill staff. We do that in a number of different ways. So you'll see here, we seek out the issues, interests, and ideas and participation from staff. So in other words, making sure we collaborate and work with our peers and our colleagues across the university and the campus and hearing out what issues are important to them. And we then develop and present proactive, progressive recommendations to the chancellor and/or their designees. So we work really closely with the chancellor's team in advocating for staff and do that in a number of different ways, resolutions, proclamations, et cetera, and really just ensuring that we collaborate effectively with all of the different levels of the university's administration that includes this body here. And really supporting the mission here at UNC. Staff are a really critical part of that mission of teaching, research, and public service, so the Employee Forum strives to encourage all of those different efforts on campus. And finally, our vision is to continually improve the quality of life at UNC Chapel Hill for its staff, faculty, and students through mutual understanding, recognition of employee contributions, and respect for the worth of the individual. Just to share a little bit about my amazing team, I couldn't do this work without the folks that are on the Employee Forum. This is a list of the officers and our one permanent staff member that helps support the Employee Forum at Banks. So these are really some key people here on my team that help do this amazing work. As Beth talked about, the Faculty Council has committees, so does the Employee Forum. These are a list of our committees that we have within the Employee Forum, and we also, as you'll see in a second, have committee representation on university-level committees as well. I'll talk a little bit about some of the amazing work these committees do a little later in the presentation, but just wanted to share all of those committees here. As I mentioned, we've got representation on the university-level committees, so that staff voices are a part of all of these different conversations. I'll point out a few of them. We've got the Committee on the Status of Women and Building and Grounds Committee, both of which are some of the Faculty Council committees that Beth discussed, so staff representation there. We've also got folks that serve on the Tuition and Fee Advisory Task Force and Student Fee Advisory Subcommittee, so staff voices are a part of that conversation of looking at tuition and fees as well. And I'll talk about STACK in a second, but that's another key body that is the Staff Advisory Committee to the Chancellor that does really great work in working with the chancellor and advising him as well. All right, recent resolutions and proclamations. I mentioned resolutions and proclamations earlier as one of the key ways in which we share our voice with the chancellor and the administration. Here's some of the the recent resolutions and proclamations that we have passed. I'll highlight a few of them. We honored former Chancellor Kevin Guskowitz as an honorary lifelong delegate. We did a similar resolution when Chancellor Folt left, and we did the same for Kevin, appreciating his service and his collaboration with staff during his time as chancellor. I'll also say, we passed a resolution recommending Juneteenth be named as a university holiday of the 12 holidays that are allocated by the state. The university has the power to choose and allocate which 12 holidays we participate in, and I think Juneteenth was one in which the Employee Forum thought it important that the university highlight and celebrate. You'll see the others listed here. Really, another key one we've been focused on over this past several years is work around housekeeping department and some of the struggles that they face, really elevating some of those concerns to the chancellor's team and to this body are really critical so that we are taken care of our housekeepers on campus. Yep, go ahead.
On some of these resolutions or proclamations, what the intended goal is, and and then also weighing that with institutional neutrality requirements that we have.
So the ultimate goal is to share kind of things of staff concern and voice to the chancellor and his team. The chancellor and his team can take with that the information that they will and kind of, you know, do with it what they will. We do not kind of speak on behalf of the university with these resolutions or proclamations. We are merely advocating for staff through the the past resolutions and proclamations that are put forward. Right. Some of the other things the Employee Forum has worked on and some really great work is going on. Keith and I, who is my vice chair, Keith Hines, served on the Advisor Committee for Transportation and Parking, which recently wrapped up some of its work to develop the five-year plan. So that was really important work to advocate for changes there. We also advocated for and helped to develop staff guidance for the AI usage on campus. We've talked a lot about AI usage during this meeting today. Staff also will be handling and utilizing AI in their roles here at UNC Chapel Hill. So we were honored to be able to put forward some guidance for staff so that they are able to effectively and safely utilize that technology as well. We hosted a listening session for the Carolina Women's Center while that group was being reconstituted, so providing staff voices of what we are looking for in that new group. We served on various campus-level searches, the search for the next chancellor. I am honored to be participating in that with several of the members of this body. Looking forward to working with you all on that process to find the 13th chancellor of UNC. We're looking at affordable housing. One of the the key issues we have here in Chapel Hill is a lot of staff cannot afford to live in the area in which we work. It's a very expensive cost of living, so we're looking at some of the the issues there to try and advocate for staff around affordable housing as well. Some more things, we provided $20,000 over the past year in professional development training opportunities. These professional development grants are really highly sought after and very competitive, so we're honored to be able to to kind of try and make a dent in some of the professional development opportunities for staff and elevate their training. We just are completing our, what we call our March Kindness Drive. This year, it supported Pee Wee Homes and Orange County Initiative that supports housing. We also sponsored a family over the holidays this past year for Orange County DSS. And we also support the Carolina Blood Drive that happens biannually here on campus. So those are always really great service efforts this forum sponsors. We're working on our peer recognition award process, and we look forward to granting those peer recognition awards in June at our meeting. So looking forward to that. It's always a great feel-good meeting. We've amplified concerns around staff mental health as well as campus accessibility concerns. So always looking to try and elevate those initiatives. And really boring stuff, but you guys did at this meeting as well. We're working on bylaws revisions and kind of refreshing some things there and implementing a chair-like system for the Employee Forum, similar to that which the faculty just passed this past year. Okay, so looking forward, some of the areas of focus that we've got for the Employee Forum moving forward, as always, staff recruitment and retention and career development kind of go hand in hand, ensuring that we have priorities and strategic initiatives that are geared towards that. I was a little bit disappointed to not see more of these strategic initiatives that we're focused on implemented in the strategic initiatives and budget priorities that were outlined earlier in this meeting. Similarly, some of the words utilized, I would like to request some some changes in the terminology we're using. Administrative burden and administrative bloat really does diminish some of the work that we're doing for faculty and staff here on campus. I would like to see it described in a broader light of investments in our people. Our people, our world-class faculty and staff are assets, ones that should be supported. So just would love to see a little bit change in language there. Instead of focusing on administrative efficiencies and savings, I would like to see us investing in our world-class faculty and staff as part of those budget priorities. Okay, some of the other kind of groups that do advocacy work here on campus for our staff, both at the campus level and at the UNC system level. So I mentioned STACK earlier. STACK is the Staff Advisory Committee to the Chancellor. It's a separate group of folks. Some Employee Forum members serve on this, but also some folks that are appointed by the chancellor. So we are kind of a smaller group session that meets with now Lee and formerly Kevin to provide staff voices around things that the chancellor's team is focused on and give him the kind of boots-on-the-ground voices from staff across campus. The other group that I'd like to highlight, we have folks that serve on the UNC System Staff Assembly. So similar to the Faculty Assembly at the state level, Staff Assembly is all 17 UNC system schools. We actually just met earlier this month, and we met over in Raleigh at the New System Office. We advocate to President Hans and the Board of Governors on behalf of staff all across the UNC system. We do some really great work on the Staff Assembly, because some of the things, the challenges we faced here at UNC Chapel Hill are really cross-system issues and things that President Hans and the Board of Governors really are the ones that have the purview to change some of those things. So I will highlight Shayna Hill, my predecessor in the role at UNC Chapel Hill's Employee Forum, is now the Chair of the Staff Assembly, so we have a great advocate and voice that works here at UNC Chapel Hill, who is advocating on behalf of all UNC system staff to President Hans. I'm sorry, before I move on from Staff Assembly, I will highlight to this board, the Janet B. Royster Staff Scholarship Fund is managed by the Staff Assembly, and we have an amazing event every year, the Chancellor's Cup Golf Tournament, to raise funds for this scholarship. I have great news that we have gotten the tournament. great news that we have gotten the tournament back at Finley this year, which I'm super excited about. We had it here at Finley two years ago, and it was a great time. So we're really honored to have that back here at UNC Chapel Hill. Chancellor Team Registration isn't quite open yet, but we always are looking for sponsors. And I've got to save the date here for you, Lee, to give you after this. But looking forward to having that back in September. It's on September 25th, and we'll have a great time at Finley Golf Course here in Chapel Hill. I wanted to highlight this slide here. Board of Trustees is on here. You are one of our key collaborators and really our partners here on campus. These various units across campus are really the folks that we work with to make sure that staff issues and concerns are addressed in an effective way. So really, we couldn't do the work that we do without these groups and without those of you on the board as well. So we appreciate you all. And finally, we're working on delegate elections right now. So we're looking forward to hosting some new, fresh employees who have a voice to share. So we are working on that now and looking forward to delegate elections in April. So if you know anyone who's a staff member at UNC, encourage them to run. Okay, questions? I will say I've got the employee forum website, which has some great materials, and our annual report really highlights some of the key work that's been done over the past year. And we'll have a new annual report out over the summer. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musgrove, for your time here today and your leadership with the staff on campus. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Musgrove? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Our final informational items to hear are presentation on the Heterodox Academy Campus Community at UNC, Heterodox Heels from Mark McNeely, Professor of the Practice of Marketing and Organizational Behavior, and Emily Putnam Hornstein, the John A. Tate Distinguished Professor for Children in Need and Faculty Co-Chair of the Children's Data Network. Welcome, Professors Putnam Hornstein and McNeely.
Well, thank you very much for inviting us to speak to this committee of the Board of the Trustees. Before we begin, Emily and I wanted to recognize that UNC won the 2023 Heterodox Academy Institutional Open Inquiry Award. And during our presentation, we're going to talk about many of the items that led to that award, such as a student research on free expression, the Program for Public Discourse, and the Faculty and Trustee Resolutions to Protect Academic Freedom and Institutional Neutrality. And our Provost Chris Clemens and our Chair of Faculty, Beth Morocco, and Trustee Jones, if you could come up as well. We'd like to have you accept the award on the part of the faculty and all those who have led the efforts to make Carolina a place where free expression and constructive dialogue flourish. We also have a few of our faculty members we'd like to have come up, Mimi Chapman, Inger Brody, as well. And then we're going to take a quick picture. So if you'd come on up. Okay. Great. You have the three people in the middle. There you go. Watch me hop in the middle. You get here, and you can take it from. Okay, there you go. Great, thank you. Okay. Great, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, back to the presentation. So Emily and I are excited to come and share our views with the trustees, the chancellor, and those attending. If we can go to the next slide. So I'm a professor of the practice, former marketing exec at IBM Lenovo. I've written a few books with Oxford University Press, and then have been involved in a lot of free expression, constructive dialogue activities, which you can see there. And I'll turn it over to Emily to talk about her bio.
Perfect. Emily Putnam Hornstein, I've been at Carolina since 2020 in the School of Social Work. Wanted to share how I found my way to Heterodox Heels. First of all, my research has focused on supporting child protection agencies improve their use of data and technology, initially hailed as innovative and impactful until there were some activists who wanted to abolish the child welfare system. So think defund the police and child protection. And I emerged from that experience kind of even more committed to the pursuit of truth above all else, as well as tenure protections. I also had an opportunity to observe a faculty council meeting last year where I heard Mark ask several questions. I realized he was someone who did not need to be embraced by everyone in the room, which was incredibly refreshing and interesting. And I decided I wanted to be a member of any club on campus he was a part of, and that proved to be Heterodox Heels. Before we start, I just want to share that we know you will not agree with everything we say today. That is okay. We hope you take our comments in the spirit in which they were developed, which is that Carolina is amazing, but higher education is at an inflection point. And as a disclaimer for everything we share, these are our observations, our opinions. We do not speak on behalf of the 70 or so faculty members who are a part of Heterodox Heels. Great minds do not always think alike.
Thanks. Okay, so we're going to begin by providing a little bit of background on Heterodox Academy, which is the international organization behind Heterodox Heels, then provide some details on our local UNC campus community, UNC, the Heterodox Heels. And then we're going to discuss where UNC has made some progress, as well as considerations about where we might improve with some specific ideas on how we might move forward. And the considerations are topics that we've come up with or that have been discussed by the faculty at our dinners and in other conversations with faculty. And then this is Emily's and my take on some of those conversations. So Heterodox Academy was founded by Jonathan Haidt, who has came to speak last month at UNC, and is focused on improving free expression, open inquiry, viewpoint diversity, and constructive dialogue. A key point of that, all those things, academic freedom, free expression, constructive dialogue, is in the service of improving teaching and research on universities in the US and other countries, which is why it's important to our members. The driving force behind Heterodox Academy was a concern about the lack of ideological diversity on campuses across the nation that was negatively impacting higher education. And as Emily mentioned, right, the slogan, great minds don't always think alike. We expect some of those observations might be welcome, others might less so. In a major step last year, what Heterodox Academy did was create its Campus Community Network. It serves as a means of promoting free expression, viewpoint diversity, and constructive dialogue on campuses across the United States, Canada, and the UK. And UNC was asked to be one of those universities because we are a leader in this space. Our local community, Heterodox Heels, has 70 members from across the campus, representing 14 out of the 15 schools at UNC. We need somebody from the dental school. So if you know anyone from the dental school. We have dinners at which we discuss issues in academia and UNC particularly. And we work with other organizations to bring in speakers such as Jonathan Haidt and Nadine Strausen, who I hosted last night with the UNC Alumni Free Speech Alliance. And many members of the committee are involved in, of Heterodox Heels, are involved in the committee and policy work on campus. A couple of comments I've heard from members about our dinners. The dinners are a place where faculty feel that they can express their real views on issues without self-censoring. In fact, we're having a dinner tonight to talk about core curriculum. And then the deep intellectual discussions at dinners are what many professors thought they would be experiencing in academia but heretofore have not had that experience. And so for many members have expressed their gratitude about the dinners, and it's heartwarming to Emily and me. On the other hand, I find these comments insightful about how our campus culture needs to be improved. Now, folks often wonder about the funding for different groups. For our activities, we receive a small amount of funding from Heterodox Academy, but most come from donations from private individuals. And you can learn more at the link on the bottom of the slide. Now, as we saw earlier, right, UNC has been recognized by Heterodox Academy for its leadership in improving free expression, constructive dialogue, et cetera. I want to cover some of those highlights of where UNC has made progress. So in 2015, UNC was one of the first universities to receive the FIRE Green Light Rating Award, when we eliminated our speech codes. In 2018, UNC faculty adopted the University of Chicago Principles on Free Speech. That was led by Mimi Chapman on that front. In 2019, UNC took a major step forward when it created the Program for Public Discourse, which is Model Constructive Discourse, especially with its Abbey Speaker Series. And I understand PPD will take over the free speech education and orientation, I think, which is a much-needed improvement. At 2020, UNC led the way with its student free expression research. At UNC, followed in 2022 by broadening that research to eight UNC System Universities at the request of the Board of Governors. And I was involved in that research with two of my co-authors, who unfortunately cannot be here today. In 2022 as well, our trustees adopted the Chicago Principles and the Calvin Report on Institutional Neutrality. UNC was the first university after the University of Chicago to adopt the Calvin Report. And now a lot of universities are following suit, and Heterodox Academy is promoting institutional neutrality as the way forward. Last year, there were a number of wins. The Faculty Committee on Academic Freedom and Free Expression was formed, and it has developed a set of academic freedoms, rights, and responsibilities. It's crucial to note that we added responsibilities to balance with our rights, right? And that's the beginning of more educational efforts in this area, and that was led by Inger Brody. A very big step also was the, excuse me, UNC School for Civic Life and Leadership, which will now extend that constructive discourse training into the curriculum, and will have a major influence, I think, on campus culture. As we mentioned, Heterodox Heels was formed. UNC won the Heterodox Academy Institutional Excellence Award, and then the UNC Trustees won the American Council of Trustees and Alumni Award for Free Speech, Institutional Neutrality, and Skill. And so we can think of these as many seeds that have been planted. Some are just starting to pop out of the ground. Others are blossoming, still others are bearing fruit. And these, I think, will continue to bury fruit in the future if we tend them well. So now what we'd like to do is move into some considerations. We're going to talk first about mission, then we'll get into free expression, talk about academics, and then bureaucracy. So let's begin with the mission. So we believe universities have the following fundamental missions in the service of North Carolina, the United States, and the world. Knowledge generation and the transmission, and its transmission for the betterment of humankind, fostering the success of future generations, which means meaningful careers and economic prosperity, for developing America as and the world's future leaders, and then providing students with the values, knowledge, and skills to exercise their democratic responsibilities. Now, achieving these fundamental missions is only possible via utilizing academic freedom, free expression, viewpoint diversity, and constructive dialogue in the pursuit of truth. As the quote here from Larry Summers states, "A world better understood is a world made better." And we can only make that world better if we understand the reality and the truth of what is going on in the world. So while we believe truth to be the main mission of the university, Jonathan Haidt, when he was here, raised the issue that many universities are confused as to their actual mission and need to decide whether they will pursue truth or other missions, such as social justice, because in his view, the two are in conflict. They are in conflict because when one pursues an ideological mission, there is motivated reasoning that affects what is taught and how research is performed and what findings are allowed to be published. There are data that UNC may have this issue. For example, UNC's current strategic plan mentions diversity 29 times, equity 28 times, and inclusion 25 times. It mentions truth once, and not at all in relation to the pursuit of truth, but in relation to developing a campus-wide shared learning instructional initiative called Student Learning to Advance Truth and Equity that focuses on history, race reckoning, and the American South. A review of the UNC course catalog shows a search for gender returns 394 course results, diversity over 200 results, race 189, critical theory 92. In contrast, the word civic has 10 available courses. The risks are having an ideological lens on what we teach and research will not allow us to understand the world better and thus make a better world. And as importantly, it will lead it to a drop in the trust by the public in support of UNC. The ways to eliminate these risks are to, one, build a new strategic plan with the pursuit of truth being the key mission that undergirds everything we do at UNC, and, secondly, having a UNC brand that stands for, quote, "the pursuit of truth in the service of humanity." Let's move on to free expression and constructive discourse. As you may have seen, back in 2022, we did the research, free expression research at UNC, and found not only that conservative students face challenges in speaking freely, but that all students, liberal, moderate, and conservative, find it hard to always speak openly about their beliefs. Note that students are more concerned about their peers than professors. Unfortunately, UNC has a safety culture which is too often used to shield students from ideas that challenge them in the ideological narrative on campus. The risks here are twofold. Students are learning to self-censor, which means that our leaders are being trained to be politically correct instead of pursuing truth. And we are training students to be fragile in a world that will be characterized by constant change, whether that's AI, something I talk about a lot, or GI politics, or geopolitics, or economic shocks, or social unrest. We need to train our students to be anti-fragile so that rather than be shattered by change, they can meet the challenge and grow stronger from it. The good news is that UNC students across the political spectrum want more opportunities to engage constructively with those who think differently. Having the Program for Public Discourse, skill, and Heterodox Heels, and similar programs will create opportunities for students to do more of that. With that, I'll turn it over to Emily.
I want to pick up where Mark left off. Data suggests that regardless of political affiliation, our students here at Carolina want an opportunity to, quote, "engage constructively," and that means free expression in the classroom and across campus. North Carolina statute prohibits holding demonstrations on public property while wearing any mask, hood, or device that would conceal the identity of the wearer. This law enacted in 1953 as a response to political violence by the Ku Klux Klan remains in full effect and provides a means of safeguarding the rights of citizens against intimidation in public spaces. Let's look at a few photos. The first is from October 12th at Wilson Library. Although not presented here, third-party observers at the Daily Tar Heel concluded and captioned this photo by noting that, quote, "many wore masks to shield their identity." They were charitable by not calling out that the protesters were actually holding the Palestinian flag upside down. The second set of photos, thank you. The second set of photos, those are from November 17th. The Daily Tar Heel describes how the protest started at Wilson Library, where more than 100 masked demonstrators stood chanting. From there, they occupied the South Building. The bottom photo is an image of video footage released by the protesters, while members of our administration facilitated water delivery and conceded to other demands. And this third set of photos, these are from a January 22nd event sponsored by PPD. The topic? Objectivity in Journalism. But the same group decided they did not agree with one of the speakers' positions on the Israel-Hamas war. And so masked protesters disrupted the event, shouting down the speakers before they were removed. You are welcome to draw your own conclusions as to whether these protesters are violating UNC policy and our state's anti-Clan law. But as you consider that question, let's look at how they themselves have communicated to their members and described their own actions. In preparation for their protest on the 17th, the one with the upside-down flag, they posted recommended attire as, quote, "masks and plain clothes, face coverings, more to come." On October 25th, 2023, following their protest on the 17th, they publicly announced that, quote, "masking is now required for all events going forward unless otherwise stated." On November 18th, following their occupation of South Building, they publicly acknowledged and brazenly announced that they were successful in, quote, "shutting down administrative operations for the day." On January 22nd, they issued a public update for their disruption of the speaker event with "remember to wear a mask," all caps. And then just last week, they posted the following. "We also want to affirm that we at SJP have only encouraged, never forced attendees to use medical masking to protect the health of themselves and others in the UNC community," which, in my opinion, is very difficult to reconcile with their earlier communications. What are the risks? Allowing speakers to be silenced by disruptive behavior undermines the free exchange of ideas and respectful dialogue on campus. A failure to enforce existing policies creates an environment in which we can expect escalating behaviors, such as the cancellation and evacuation of a speaker and audience members at Berkeley, along with vandalism. We owe our students and our community clarity as to which of our current policies will or will not be enforced, and how violations will be handled. Academics. When Jonathan Haidt joined us in February, he discussed how quickly universities were committing "brand suicide," his words. "We need to think carefully about how we maintain the academic rigor that has defined what it means to be a graduate from Carolina." First, please take a look at how the average GPA at UNC Chapel Hill has steadily increased over time. During the last five years, our mean GPA was 3.5. And while grade inflation is certainly a story at all universities, And while grade inflation is certainly a story at all universities, data assembled for national comparisons suggests that Carolina's inflation outpaces that of other selective institutions. This is a critical topic for at least two reasons. First, we must consider how grade inflation affects our students. I agree with this student who said, quote, "Grade inflation is the academy's version of a participation trophy in youth sport." And as much as this is true, we must ask if we are properly preparing our students for the real world or simply training them to expect high reward and honors regardless of effort or the quality of their work. Likewise, we must consider if we are reducing student motivation to engage in their studies and strive for excellence. Second, universities are first and foremost credentialing agencies. When high grades are handed out so freely, we make it harder for employers and others to distinguish among our graduates based on their relative level of preparation and achievement. That hurts the reputation of UNC, and it hurts our students. Tackling grade inflation won't be easy, but there are good ideas out there. For example, UNC's Faculty Council passed a resolution in 2012 to adopt, quote, "contextualized transcripts." Student grades would be reported in the context of the average grade in the class. For reasons that I don't quite understand, technology challenges were cited, this still has not occurred. We should revisit. Another topic of significant interest to faculty and others is what we are going to do when it comes to standardized tests. Frankly, I trust that ultimately we will decide to reinstate SAT and ACT requirements across our UNC system and certainly here at Carolina, joining MIT, Dartmouth, Brown, and most recently, the University of Texas at Austin. UT Austin noted significant achievement gaps between students who submitted test scores and those who did not. There was a 250-point gap, more than a standard deviation, between those who submitted test scores and those who did not. As their president explained, standardized testing is a valuable tool with an abundance of high school GPAs surrounding 4.0, and SAT or ACT score is a proven differentiator that is in each student and the university's best interest. A report out of Dartmouth noted in the context of their decision to reinstate testing requirements, standardized test scores are significantly predictive of academic success at Dartmouth and increase the likelihood that admissions will be positioned to identify high-achieving, less advantaged applicants, which I know is a goal we all share. But I would also say that while all the chatter is around SATs and ACTs, we should also study the impact of our graduate schools' decision to drop GRE requirements in 2020. Yes, individual programs can still opt in, but it would appear that that is true for less than 10% of programs. And when I decided to go and look and understand what was the context, I found the following quotes from administrators. A quote where they acknowledged faculty members were quite, the word was, "There was trepidation, but then students were happy." Our job is not to make students happy. There is another quote, "The GRE can present a significant barrier to prospective students based on the time spent studying for the test." Yes. And a third, "A standardized test, because it is a raw number that's easily comparable, can seem like it's absolutely crucially important." Yes. "The rigor of Carolina's academic programs is our competitive advantage. Standardized tests help to ensure we are admitting and matching students across our system who will be successful. We should not apologize for having minimum eligibility requirements for our programs." Last but not least, bureaucracy. We are all for operational efficiency, and we do appreciate that universities today must operate in an environment that has become much more highly regulated. But there are at least four key questions we believe deserve continued attention. First, how does the culture of a university change when there are, insert a number here, times as many people in staff and administrative positions as those whose primary charge is teaching and instruction? Do we have evidence that increased staffing for student support services has improved students' academic experiences or outcomes? Is our bureaucracy creating measurable operational efficiencies for faculty and for the institution? And finally, is it possible that the growth of non-faculty has actually made it harder for faculty to educate students? With that, I will turn it over to Mark, and then we're happy to take questions.
Thank you, Emily. Yeah, just one example on the bureaucracy thing. So I've got to take three DEI/harassment-related trainings every year, the same training. Training is, I'll be honest with you, time-consuming, not effective. I think it's frankly not well-done. When you take it, it's got several gotcha questions that you must get 100% on to pass, and you have to continually take the test until you pass. They could really be done much more easily, like here's the three things you need to know about, whether it's the CLARIC Act, preventing harassment and discrimination, it could be done very quickly, and ask questions that are germane to what is it you really need to know. And then once you know the three things, it's like, you have any questions? Call 1-800-CLARIC or whatever, right? So that's something, I think, just one example of something that needs to be looked at. So in closing, UNC has made major progress in improving our culture. I don't want to forget that, of free expression and constructive dialogue. And as such, we've been nationally recognized for our progress with awards. Despite the issues we've raised, we need to remember we've planted many seeds. Some are growing, some are blooming, some are bearing fruit. We can continue to nurture what we've planted by, one, refocusing on truth as the core mission to enable our submissions, and do that by developing a new UNC strategic plan with truth as its central mission and have the UNC brand stand for "The Pursuit of Truth in the Service of Humanity." UNC is in many businesses, number two, and the main one, though, is credentialing. With grade inflation and no standardized tests, we are devaluing our credentials. We need to renew academic excellence and merit by restoring standardized tests, or at least studying the impact of not restoring standardized tests, and dealing with grade inflation. Three, we must move from a safety culture to an anti-fragile culture by cultivating a discovery mindset that challenges all ideas. Investing in PPD and skill and courses that expose students to multiple viewpoints is one way to do that. Also making clear that this change is there in the strategic plan, new strategic plan would be an essential means of helping guide the university. Four, draw a clear distinction between free expression and actions that disrupt the educational mission of the university. We need to ensure faculty, staff, and students understand that, one, we support free speech on campus, and that, but that also that faculty and students are aware of their rights and responsibilities regarding free expression, especially institutional neutrality. You would not believe how confused people are on institutional neutrality. So we definitely need to get some guidelines out on that. At the same time, make clear when actions that limit other speech rights will have consequences. And then lastly, diminish the influence of the bureaucracy and empower the faculty by performing an audit of what are the impositions that we're putting on our faculty that reduce the time available for teaching and research, and eliminate those or change them. So with that, I know we've covered a lot of data and information, but we'd open it up for any questions you may have.
Thank you both for being here today and for your leadership on these issues. I'd like to think that UNC, at least on paper, has probably the freest campus in America. And I would like to move from the paper to the culture, which I guess would be a big next step for us to do, and I think we're making great strides in that regard. Does anyone have any questions? Trusty Codis?
Can I say, I wish we could just adopt all five of those closing thoughts, because they're extremely important and need to be tackled. I guess my question would be the follow-up on this. So implementation, what can the board do? Or what needs to happen to address those five items? And ensure that it's not just something we hear in a presentation today, and then there's not the follow-up to make sure it happens?
I think some of those things, number one, I think we really need a new strategic plan that really refocuses on truth as the key mission and updates what it is that we have, we're going to have a new chancellor, right? This now is the time to do a new strategic plan and refocus on what's really important to the university. I think on the rewarding academic merit, I think Emily spoke, and maybe you want to add here, about doing some audits or some look at what to do with grade inflation.
Certainly, I think going back to that resolution from 2012 and exploring the contextualized grading. And then, again, I do think that, I think there's a lot of discussion about the SAT, ACT, but I think we need to study the impact of no longer requiring the GRE.
Yeah. And back on the strategic plan, every time we get into discussions about diversity and DEI and stuff like that, people point back to like, well, we've got to do that because it's in the strategic plan, right? So that's what's driving a lot of that. So you might think of a strategic plan as a nothing burger, but it's something that guides, I mean, if we actually use it, a strategy should be guiding the institution. So what you put in that strategy document should drive the institution. So I think that's one of the first places to start. I think including the part about we've got to move to a resilience and anti-fragile culture is something that has to be in the strategic plan, is something that we do. I think the clarity part, and do you want anything on the clarity part? So the clarity is just like, whatever the rules are, we need to make, clear the rules and enforce those rules. That's all we're saying, right? Whatever the rules are, that's great, just communicate those and then enforce those. And then I think on the size of the bureaucracy, I think, I know there's a lot of effort to reduce the impact on teachers and faculty, which is very much appreciated. But I think there's some small things that maybe fall under the radar, like the training. I mean, if you tell, take what I have to do and you multiply that times 4,500 faculty, that's a lot of hours and a lot of frustration, right? Might be a minor thing, but I tell you, it'd be a hero if you looked at like the mandatory training just by itself.
I completely agree. And I think there's a level of bureaucracy that you pointed out that flows back through to everyone in this room, where everyone's taking, let's say, a required online class or a required certification that you have to do every couple of years. And that's time, in the same way this meeting is time for people as well, but.
Even if I have to take the training, at least make it relevant to me and make it short, make it like, this is what you need to know, got any questions, call this number.
Absolutely. On two of those items, just to follow up, the disruptions we experienced today. And I would like for us to not leave until we've addressed, you know, how that's going to be dealt with and how those students are going to be reprimanded. Because until that happens, they will continue to do it. And it's not, this is a mild version of it, but when you're in a room and 45 people stand up next to folks that are just casually sitting there and they start screaming in their ears, that's a real threat. And we talk about the mental health crisis on campus, that's exacerbating that problem. Second thing is the SAT reinstatement. I was part of the Board of Governors that voted to allow for a suspension of that requirement for two years, but it had a sunset of two years. And unfortunately, and this was pointed out by Steve Long and our Pope at that time, there was going to be a push then to make that permanent. I didn't think that was possible. I was wrong, they were right. And I think that we should take a stance as a school, that we want that as a tool that we can use for the Board of Governors vote coming up and communicate that, if that's the will of the board.
Thank you, Trusty Codis. Is anyone else? Trusty Ball?
Thanks for the presentation. I agree with you about the strategic plan. Question about, and you sort of alluded to it, but what would be a percentage of your day with respect to your duties that you would typically devote to? And I know it's just one person, so it's anecdotal, but that you would devote to bureaucratic compliance, classes, that type of thing? Do you have a thumbnail on that? If not, it's okay.
So this is another little thing, this is a little frustrating thing, just like, for every email that we get, it's like, you get this little thing that says at the top. You don't usually get email from Emily Putnam-Hornstein, right? So you better be careful for this, like every email, it's like, so I can't, I can't look, I can't look at my watch and figure out what the thing is. So I mean, that's a nit, but it's like, do I really need every email to be told that, gotta check this email? So it's just constant little things that people dream up. I shouldn't say that, okay, I'm getting a little bit angst written here, but there are things that people put on faculty thinking that makes a lot of sense, right? And in that little sphere, it makes sense, but when you add these things up, it's a lot.
The classes that you take, now that just comes down, did you have, and maybe Professor Morocco could speak to this. I don't want to put you on the spot, but curious as to what the faculty input is on the design of those types of classes? Where they come from and from where do they emanate? Trainings or whatever that Dr. Emilio.
It varies on the type of training, and I, you know, I would, I would say for some of, and I just took my EOC training myself. And some of these issues are really important. You need to know to whom to report when there's been an incident, et cetera, et cetera. So I wouldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater because, you know, it is important. We had this conversation, I think, a few meetings ago about whether faculty should have mandatory training on safety for active shooting. This was after active shooters, this was after the shooting that we had on campus. So, you know, I grumble as much as anyone when I'm clicking through my trainees, but again, it's, I think, thinking about what's the purpose? Does the training meet that purpose? Where is this requirement coming from? Before we decide, oh, let's, you know, let's abolish all these trainings, or let's, you know, let's have a goal of just reducing without thinking about what's the purpose? And is there overlap? Are there redundancies? So I would, that's what I would say. And since I have the mind.
That's why I asked. That's why I asked. I asked because I'm really curious, because I would think there are some things that need to be addressed and they're relevant to a lot of different aspects of not only teaching, but being a member of an organization, being employed by an employer.
Legal requirements.
And then also, you know, living on campus and working on campus, there are other things. That's why I was asking, just curious.
Yeah.
So faculty doesn't have much input on those, right?
Typically not, although we sometimes can discuss them at Faculty Council if you want to make a recommendation.
Bring in resolution.
Great. Looking forward to them. And can I ask a question since I'm up here at the mic? So I'm interested in this, like, focus on truth as the core mission of the universities. So how do we define truth? I mean, that seems like a question that philosophers and ethicists and folks have grappled with for centuries. And as a researcher, if I'm going to measure something or I'm going to investigate or implement something, I want to know how it's defined, how it's measured, and.
Yeah, that's a great question, and we could spend the rest of the afternoon talking about. But I think, I think it's really, in my mind, it's reality. Are we seeking what's really true, understanding what the real problems are? Probably much more important in the sciences, but it's also philosophically what is true, right? And it's not that we will attain truth, it's that we will pursue truth, right? And we're going to pursue truth through academic freedom, free expression, viewpoint diversity, right? And it's, if we have that as a telos, there is a mission versus we have other missions that are more ideologically centered, that limits your ability to pursue truth, because there's motivated reasoning that leads you down a certain path instead of the pursuit of truth. At least that's my position.
If I could just add one thing to the bureaucracy with some very specific examples. You know, one example is right now, and Chancellor Roberts, I know you already mentioned kind of the need to look more closely at HR. But we have to form a full search committee for every single position, even just staff positions. Our school was conducting a faculty search, and because everyone was so terrified about potentially being out of compliance with the protocols for conducting a search, we asked someone from HR to sit in on every single interview we held, right? I mean, that's just kind of, in my mind, an absurdity and not a demonstration of how our operations are becoming more efficient. I have a colleague who has been involved in an EOC compliance issue that has dragged on for 27 months, and she has been kind of interviewed by them all of once. So I feel like the list goes on, and there are a number of things where if we just looked a little bit more closely, you know, the layers of development, you know, university down to school, comms, comms assistance. I mean, I barely know what everyone in my school does, and we're not a very large school. And a lot of the staff positions feel like they are supporting layers of administration as opposed to working directly with faculty to improve teaching or research. layers of administration as opposed to working directly with faculty to improve teaching or research.
Yeah, this is going to be strange and it's going to get me in trouble. I'm going to ask anyway. Sounds like y'all, your organization is about kind of being pissed off at society and norms.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with that. We're looking for intelligent norms.
I guess my question is, especially as we focus on some of the internal issues we're dealing with here at UNC and y'all have made a lot of points about one stakeholder and that is, you know, the administration, faculty and how we do it at UNC. Have you taken a critical view about some of the criticism we're getting and others are getting about other stakeholders and potential interference by other stakeholders? Or is that even something that concerns you?
Oh, you mean in terms of, can you clarify what?
It's governance and how we govern ourselves. We've got a board of trustees, we've got a board of governors, legislature, we've got faculty, we got administrative, we got all, and we're having issues.
Yeah, I think every, yeah.
Are you just looking at the faculty and the administration here or are you looking outside of that?
I think that's a totally fair question. We are the faculty, so we're kind of having conversations that, about the topics that most directly affect us and where we can observe that. But I agree that there are many other conversations that probably need to take place about layers of governance there.
Yeah, I think when you look broadly at academia, right? And we saw what happened with the congressional hearings. I think that was a wake-up call for a lot of people over the problems that are in academia, right? And what you're seeing is the trust in academia, along with trust in other institutions, is consistently declining. Right? And so every institution gets to do, manage itself as long as it meets its social contract. When it fails to meet its social contract, that's when people get involved. You think of banks, for example, right? 2018 crisis, right? If people are losing trust in universities, then you have to think about, there's one, one or two things, there's a perception problem or a reality problem, right? And if you, if the university were doing what society expected, I would say you're not, you would not be getting the oversight you're getting now. So people don't like it, people don't think that the faculty should decide, but we've been brought to a place with the current governance system.
With, with the success of this university and the metrics with this university and increasing number of kids that want to come here, what is the overall crisis or concern that you have? As far as our reputation and how we're doing things here currently?
I think it is a reputation overall for universities and academics. I mean, if you look at the trust in, in public institutions, whether they trust universities to, to, to be non-ideological, the cost of universities, the fact that universities, and so these are not all UNC issues, right? We have, we are lucky in that we are at the very top. But if we want to stay at the top, I think we outline some of those risks, risks of ideological capture versus pursuing truth, right? Risk of grade inflation, risk of not having good standards for entrance, right? I'm not sure 70,000 is a good metric, right? Of like the more, is that a good metric? What is a good metric to understand how, who should be coming, who should be coming to Carolina? We have to think of Carolina in the context of the university system, right? We are a flagship university. We are going to attract a different set of students than other students. And it doesn't mean every student should get to go to Carolina. There's other universities where they might be flourishing, they might flourish better. So we need to decide as a system, we're, you know, help students decide where they're supposed to go. But it certainly doesn't help us if we devalue, you know, what, what our mission is and we devalue the currency that we have. We're in the credentialing business, right? When it comes down to it, we're also in the food business, we're in the medicine business. But, I mean, when it comes down to it, we're in the credentialing business, right? And if you devalue your credentials, you become worthless.
I've got one more thing I wanted to say, and I would agree with that. I think we also have to be cognizant of the owners of this university, which are the citizens and taxpayers of the state of North Carolina, who, as we've heard this morning, have generously funded this university this year in this upcoming budget cycle, $671 million, which is the envy of every public university in the nation. We have tremendous public support. And so I think we have to be, while we, while we want to pursue academics, truth, however you define truth, we need to be, as a university, cognizant of, you know, how we are perceived by the citizens of North Carolina and attentive to the economic engine that we are and what we ultimately provide in return for that investment to the state.
Yeah, and I think, I think what I wasn't saying is like, we're just here to pursue truth and think about truth all the time, right? Those, that's the undergirding of the economic and job prosperity that the university has to drive and, and student training for careers and how to be a good citizen. But all that is undergirded by the search for, for the search for truth. That is, and knowledge generation and transmission is impossible without those things.
I'm curious in that, I believe in another big position where I believe that social issues and truth about coexist and do so well. That's my personal take. So I'm curious in terms of what you laid out here. Do you think that there is a compromise that can be made to be true? So I think that's the, my principle, my perspective as far as the problems that end up around. Do you think that's possible as I just, that it is?
Sure. Yeah, no, I think it's certainly possible. I think if you, it's not like we don't want to improve the social condition of everyone in North Carolina and the world. We of course do, right? It's how do you get there, right? And if you pursue truth, you will understand what are the really, what is the reality of what's causing the issues that we face, right? Versus if you go on with a certain mindset of how you view the world. So if you view the world through data, right, and have an open mind and you engage with people from across the spectrum, right? As we talked, as we heard about with Hamilton Hall, right? And you listen to different people, you will get closer to the truth. You will not attain the truth, but you'll get closer to the truth. And you can only do that by having that pursuit of truth as the basis in the goal of, you know, improving the social conditions of everyone in the United States.
If I can just add with a very, again, specific example, I'm teaching a child welfare policy class to masters and social work students. I've got, I think, 22 students, they're amazing. And we set up the class where we are debating just about every single hot topic in the field right now. So I'm not standing up there telling them we should or shouldn't, again, defund or abolish the system. We're looking at data and they are being exposed to arguments on both sides. And the idea is that that education in the classroom will then launch them to go and be amazing social justice or other activists. So it's really just about how we're framing some of those conversations. And I think we also want to reflect, like, we think a ton of our, like, I think faculty do a great job at that. So what Mark is really talking about here is how do we make sure that we don't lose sight of that? And part of that is our strategic plan.
Really, I'm actually on bureaucracy. I think it's an important topic, but to be determined. The fishing example, that's one where I just don't know the depth of the comment. If it's a situation where faculty are actively participating in cybersecurity, training and things of that nature, then I become less sympathetic to your comment. I just don't know the depth, you know, so that it's an important topic, the tricky one.
Yes.
And I just don't know where we are. So it's not a question, but it's a comment that context matters.
Right. And I think one thing that would, yeah.
Fishing.
Yeah.
Maybe it is, but I also have no idea.
Right.
If faculty are actively participating, globally, the ultimate stakeholder is university.
Yes, and the public, I think, in the end, right, and our students. I, I think that was, that's one area where I'd say we have the least data. So I think that's a fair point. But I think if you were to, if we were to look at some just specific areas, as we've started with faculty training and you've asked, maybe if you had the, got some faculty to ask about what are some of the issues that they face, right? And then you could say, okay, where do we really think there is something? And there should probably be some looking at data from the top down. So bottoms up, what are some of the challenges you face and then it tops down, like, what do the data tell us?
Or even if there's an issue of having a conversation with some steps like that.
Right. Yeah, I asked about the training and I was told like, well, look at that. So that's why I'm now here.
Yeah, no, just a comment.
Yeah. Yeah. Great. Well, thank you. We appreciate it very much.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the March meetings of the Committee on Special Affairs. As Chair of this committee today, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest, appearances, conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict of interest or conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before you today, please have a careful thought. Also, North Carolina law and UNC system and policy prohibit willful interruption, disturbance or disruption of an official public meeting. Further. Right, Dan. We have a systemic problem here. Further, North Carolina law provides it as a class two misdemeanor for any person to refuse to leave an official meeting on the being directed to do so. And you saw a few people adhere to that direction earlier. So so if the U.S. authorities, anyone here interrupts, disturbs or disrupts this meeting will be asked to leave. If they do not leave, will ask to leave. I'll ask Chris Thorndorff now, please follow.
Vice Chair Valentine, Mr. Blaine, Mr. Brown, Mr. Everett, Mr. Kalapa, Mr. Codis, Mr. Meekins, Mr. Patel, Mr. Pryor.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
First item of business is to review and approve the minutes of the November 8.
2023 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the open minutes of November 8, 2023?
Yes.
I hear a motion from Trustee Everett and a second from Trustee Patel. Any discussion or debate? Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This item will be placed on the consent agenda for the full board's approval tomorrow. Then the next, I think we're going to do legislative update. Our next agenda item for this afternoon is to hear from Legislative Update. Amy McConkey, Director of State Affairs, and Kelly Dockham, Director of Federal Affairs. I guess Ms. McConkey is going to go first. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Ben Marks. Looks like we still have university affairs on the screen, not sure if mine is queued up, but. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Valentine, members, Chancellor. It's great to be before you today. It continues to be a very busy time and exciting time to represent the state's flagship institution in Raleigh. Higher ed is as important as it's ever been and our public service mission at Carolina resonates now more than ever. As the recipient of state and federal resources, we prove time and time again that these investments create strong lasting returns for our state. And it's something that has been discussed earlier, that value proposition is critical during a time when public confidence in higher education is declining. But the world is changing and the winners are those who learn how to evolve and adapt for changing times. We are in transition, which can be disruptive, things can get mixed up. It throws us off a little bit, but it creates engagement and opportunity. It's a time for important questions to be asked and answered. And from where I sit, the conversations I have every day with policymakers across the political spectrum, Carolina is well positioned to seize this moment. But we have to remain humble. It's a theme that Chairman Pryor and you on the board have reiterated and rightly emphasized. And we have to continue to be responsive to the state's evolving needs. It's something I try to keep in mind every day as I meet with lawmakers. And I'm so encouraged by our commitment to that goal. So with that being said, let's get into what's going on in Raleigh. So we've been in an interim session at the Legislature and as you recall, the adjournment happened late October of last year. And in the adjournment resolution, the General Assembly held out a couple of days a month to give themselves the option to meet. So far, these mini sessions set out in the adjournment resolution have been skeletal. But there has been a lot of interim committee work that's been going on. So the joint legislative oversight committees have been meeting. We refer to them as the JLOCK committees. And you can see they're listed, there's various subject matter areas that they meet on. In the budget that, that was passed last year by the Legislature, UNC Chapel Hill, the Board of Trustees, in coordination with UNC administration, was required to submit a report on the School of Civic Life and Leadership. So that was submitted to the UNC, or excuse me, the General Assembly's Fiscal Research Division and to JLOCK Education as part of that committee work submitted on time. Additionally, House Select Committees are considering a few focus areas and those include education reform, homeowners associations, and substance abuse. And here you can see, we have one of our rock star researchers, Dr. Daz Gupta, who presented recently to the House Select Committee on Substance Abuse earlier this month. Was a really dynamic presentation on an important area that the General Assembly is looking into. And that is sort of the detrimental side effects of this gas station heroin. Dr. Daz Gupta is an expert in this area. He runs the street drug analysis lab through the UNC Injury Prevention Research Center and Gillings. And his presentation generated a lot of interest from lawmakers. I think many are looking to come and visit his lab a little later this year. Looking at the short session, this slide is short, we hope the short session will be two. The budget is always the focus, right, of the short session, adjustments to the budget. Availability is limited. We, we are expecting a relatively flat revenue forecast. We're looking at maybe 300, 350 million dollars in new availability. There's some large ticket items that have a lot of interest and support at the Legislature. And those items are expected to consume a lot of this new availability. That's right, that's what we're working on. The, you know, talking about what those are, we could talk about that just briefly, the opportunity scholarship expansion. There's been strong interest in that at the General Assembly. You all, I know, have been hearing about that in the news. We're expecting a couple of hundred million dollars to be needed to, to carry out that new expansion of opportunity scholarships. There is also some other big asks in the education budget, the community college system. Their governing board recently talked about a new program, a workforce development program called Propel NC. That project would, it has about a hundred million dollar price tag. So suffice to say lawmakers will have their work cut out for them in determining how to allocate scarce resources. Looking at the schedule, the Legislature convenes on April 24th and will likely run through June, possibly into July. So we hope it's on the earlier side of that timeframe. It's a big election year this year, so lawmakers certainly have a lot of work to do to, to, to meet their constituents. It's a big election year this year, so lawmakers certainly have a lot of work to do to meet their constituents and to get ready for their elections. Looking at the UNC system priorities, the Board of Governors meets in April to approve the system and campus priorities, which they previewed in their February meeting. I won't get into the weeds on these. I know Nate Knuffman was able to cover these on his presentation. But you can see the operating budget priorities here, performance-weighted enrollment change, building reserves, completion assistance programs, and labor market adjustment fund. Additionally, some capital priorities are in our inflationary cost increases, campus safety infrastructure, which you got into. Again, we have a little piece of that. HBCU critical infrastructure and capital project management flexibility. So when they meet on April eighteenth, they will approve. We expect them to approve those priorities, and then we will have our marching orders down at the legislature. So as you see on the bottom, UNC Chapel Hill has a four million non-recurring request for enterprise security cameras as part of that campus safety infrastructure proposal. Okay, moving on to outreach and engagement. I've got some pictures here of some of the great engagement. Trustee Evans sees herself and you, Vice Chair Valentine, meeting with Senator Paul Newton there at a football practice that was really fun. I'm pictured with the Chair of the House Universities Committee, Representative Ray Pickett. Of course, he had a great celebration at the Governor's Mansion recently for the UNC field hockey team. Every day, it feels like we have something to celebrate in Carolina. So to look at a few of the engagement opportunities we have had recently with the legislature. Just last week, we had a great event with Gillings. It's the UNC Academy Health Policy Day. Senator Gail Adcock and Representative Wayne Sasser joined some of our guests. Professor Aaron Frayer with Gillings was wonderful, as was Lori Byrd with the School of Nursing. So just a great discussion on healthcare workforce and how Carolina is really driving the data around healthcare workforce through the Shep Center. This is a great resource for legislators, and they certainly appreciate the work that is coming out of the Shep Center to help them make data-driven decisions around the healthcare workforce. Another recent opportunity as part of the Keenan Institute was the North Carolina Growth Showcase on February twenty-second. This was really fun. The focus was rural economic development. Fayetteville State Chancellor Daryl Allison was the keynote speaker. He was so energizing, he had the whole group fired up around what they are doing in Fayetteville and really beyond to encourage the growth of small businesses. It was a really great day to learn about the work happening there. Dean Mary Margaret Frank presented, as did Provost Clemens, and we were delighted to have, again, Ray Pickett, who chairs the House Universities Committee, to join us as well. Excuse me. We've got some great students here on campus, and they love being engaged in the process. So it is one of the sort of most gratifying things that I get to do in this role is to meet with these students, to help them understand what's going on at the legislature, to really pull them in. And they shine so well for us. They're great advocates for the university. So recently, we had the Science Policy and Advocacy Group. We did a how-to lobby workshop with them. Their faculty advisor is someone known well by this board. It's Dr. Jeff Moran. He and I sort of jointly put on a workshop for those students. And then we had a great day at the legislature. You can see these are the two leaders of that group with Senator Kevin Corbin and Representative Wayne Sasser. You know, we're really focusing with our Board of Visitors and the General Alumni Association as well. There's been a strong interest in increasing their legislative engagement. I know many of you have talked to me about it. I know trustee White, who is not here today, has been centrally involved in this effort as well. But we're sitting down and talking about how we can really meaningfully get them involved. Our work is sort of tricky sometimes. A lot of the work at the legislature, as you know, happens behind closed doors. And there's nuance there that is hard to translate sometimes to broader groups. But we're looking to use these coalitions of folks to advocate for some broader, long-term priorities for Carolina. And some of the sort of tactics that we're using to get there is building out a relationship matrix with both of these groups, mapping who they know at the General Assembly and who they know maybe more broadly in state government, so that when we need to tap them to have a conversation with their lawmaker about distinguished professorships or about, you know, the importance of humanities, or whatever that may be, we know how to strategically target those conversations. So we're working out a relationship matrix with them. We are involving them in a letter-writing exercise. They said, what can we do? And I said, you need to tell them thank you. You know, we have had historic investments. So what we created for them, you know, we basically broke down the budget allocations on campus. And we said, just choose one of these that matters to you. You know, is it School of Civic Life? Is it School of Data Science and Society? Is it the nursing school and the renovations going on at Carrington Hall? Whatever it is, you choose the thing that matters to you, and you reach out to your lawmaker and share your thanks and gratitude for that. Open up a relationship with them. And so we're really excited about getting them involved in this way. And finally, we're talking about a legislative day, incorporating the General Alumni Association, kind of building that around the legislative reception that is scheduled in Raleigh on June fifth. So I think this will likely be a smaller group. We want to walk before we run on this. But still an exciting sort of first step to continue to increase that engagement with those groups. Okay, this has been keeping me really busy lately, but it's fun and it's a great touch point for us. Athletic hospitality, we've had a lot of great opportunities to do this lately. You can see some pictures here. We've got a group of senators, state senators at the ACC tournament. Got some pictures from the Duke reception. We enjoyed the company of some of our lawmakers at some recent basketball games. And so we hope to continue and carry on. We've got some Carolina folks out in LA now getting ready for the game tonight. And we hope to see some folks in Phoenix as well. And also, I should say, I really appreciate the help of the board on that front. You all have been great advocates, you know. Trustee Evans, in particular, you know, gave us some really helpful suggestions about creating a, you know, sharing some of the briefings that we were already doing to make sure that the trustees have that information, so that they could also engage in a meaningful way with our legislative guests. So it's something that we're looking to carry on out into the future, and certainly appreciate that suggestion. Oh, I guess that does it for me. Glad to take any questions. Certainly, if you want to, I know we're getting late in the day, so glad to hold on this for another time as well.
Can you tell us about the opportunity you can find, whether we can use it as a faculty meeting or not?
Absolutely, yes. Look for an invitation coming out soon. I just had some outreach with Veronica and her team at the General Alumni Association. Would love to have trustees there joining us. That'd be really important. It will be, I think it'll be at five o'clock. It's always, the reception will be at the end of the business day. I believe it's at the Museum of History. But we will have an invitation on that coming very soon. And all the legislature is invited, as well as some staff as well. We really focus in on alumni who run this legislative staff to invite.
Go ahead.
First of all, I think there's a lot of criticism around the community about the number of people on our board who have affiliations in Raleigh. But I think this is an opportunity for us to thank the people who have affiliations in Raleigh, who have served the legislature, who serve the legislature, or who have served on Board of Governors, and to be grateful in this season, as we approach the short session, to have such strong advocates, so closely involved in the working of the university. You know, both things are true. With governance comes opportunity and responsibility, and I'm very, very grateful to each of the members of the board who have dedicated so much time to our relationships in Raleigh and at the Board of Governors. And the other thing I'd like to say, and I've said it a hundred times, if we could all be much more mindful to be hospitable and welcoming and inviting our General Assembly members, our friends, and frankly, those who have been critics in the same way that we invite our governors, and to treat the legislature like our largest donor, which they often are, and to be sincerely engaged in that at all times, to think of them first, and to be tireless in our outreach, in our invitations, and to be sincere.
Thank you, trustee Evans, and thank you, Amy, and enjoy your spring break this week. Thanks for being here on spring break. Kelly Dockham, next.
Hey. Good afternoon, Chair, committee members. Always appreciate the opportunity to share a short congressional update. My update this afternoon will focus on budget and appropriations, and I will save the policy and authorizing legislative update for the next committee meeting in May. So this is a different type of March Madness in Washington, DC. This time of year is when school groups, tourists, you know, they're all flocking to the nation's Capitol to take in the history of the sites. You know, charter bus companies, they're making a killing with the school groups that are all over DC right now. Cherry blossoms are in full bloom with the National Cherry Blossom Festival. And I like to call it silly season on Capitol Hill, more known as the fly-in season. This is where just about every national association, coalition, group, they flood Capitol Hill to advocate for their respective priorities and also discuss funding levels for the upcoming fiscal year. March historically has always been a busy time where Congress officially kicks off the annual appropriations process shortly after receiving the president's budget request. This is also when just about every member in Congress solicits programmatic requests from constituents. This in turn will help them shape their funding requests, their priorities, that they will then submit to House and Senate Appropriations Committees. This is also where budget and appropriations committees are busy holding hearings with the administration, agency officials discussing the funding recommendations that were in the president's budget. However, I must say that this spring of twenty-four has been uniquely hectic on Capitol Hill as Congress has been working to negotiate and finalize the current fiscal year, twenty-four, that we're in, to finalize all the appropriation bills there, while at the same time trying to jumpstart on this new fiscal year for FY twenty-five. But I'm pleased to report that six months into this new fiscal year, and after several continuing resolutions to keep the federal government open, that Congress has now cleared all twelve appropriation bills for FY twenty-four. Instead of passing each bill separately, they chose to speed up the process by putting the twelve bills into two separate funding packages, termed affectionately as a mini-bus. The first mini-bus you'll see on the screen I have here consisted of six appropriation bills ranging from military construction VA, commerce, justice, science, which includes funding for the National Science Foundation, NOAA, NASA, and others. That bill was passed early in March on the eighth. Then the second mini-bus, which you'll see listed below, included the remaining six appropriation bills. But there's nothing mini about this package because within this legislation, within this funding legislation, these bills made up close to seventy percent of the federal budget. And you'll see that included defense, labor, HHS, education, state and foreign ops. This tranche of bills also proved to be the most contentious. As we all know, it's a very slim majority within the House for the Republican caucus that has been pushing for deeper cuts to annual appropriations bills. And then with a Democratic-controlled Senate that feels there's not enough funding that is going to especially non-defense discretionary accounts. So I cannot overemphasize enough just how challenging the past six months have been for Congress to get these funding bills across the finish line. And to manage expectations that I've been doing over the past several months and will continue to do is, you should view, we should view flat funding as a win in this political environment, especially the fact that we are going into a presidential election year. So just want to keep that in mind. So before I jump into sharing what were in these two mini-buses, just wanted to refresh everyone's minds on why congressional appropriations is so important here at Carolina. Of course, I can't go through all the programs here on campus that receive federal support. But today, just wanted to highlight, looking just at this academic year, the first priority, of course, is federal financial aid and support for our students. You'll see here, the Pell Grant, federal Pell Grant program is critically important to our undergraduates here. Therefore, we want to make sure that this program continues to receive strong bipartisan support to make sure that our media students are able to receive a quality education and graduate on time. Then we have the federal work-study program, also very important for our students, especially for those that are in our Carolina Covenant Program. So we will continue to beat the drum advocating for continued support and investment to these programs. So that alone, just for this academic year, that's twenty-five million dollars. That's important for our federal budget and appropriations. Switching gears, looking at research, our bread and butter here. You will see in this pie chart, many of you know, the federal government is our largest sponsor when it comes to research that's being done here at UNC Chapel Hill, making up, you know, close to sixty-four percent. Boiling it down, looking at the federal funders, the National Institutes of Health continues to be UNC Chapel Hill's largest federal funder for research. Just for fiscal year twenty-two alone, it was six hundred and seventy-three million dollars coming from the National Institutes of Health here to UNC Chapel Hill to conduct research. Our second-largest funder is Health and Human Services, which encompasses CDC, also the Health Services Research Administration. And then NSF, the National Science Foundation, rounds out in third. So again, looking at financial aid mixed with, you know, research, just for one fiscal year, we're looking at around eight hundred and seventy-five million dollars just for one fiscal year. So these are just two important areas here on campus as to why we want to make sure that we continue to have strong federal support. On the screen, this is a funding chart that our office has pulled together, again, just highlighting numbers for the various agencies and programs that are important to our campus community. Of course, this is not an exhaustive list. The federal budget's large. Just wanted to notice, you'll see on the far left, we have the agencies that are represented there. And then on the far right, you will see the fiscal year twenty-four, the recently enacted numbers. You'll also notice that in numbers in red show a decrease in percentage from fiscal year twenty-three. So again, I want to go back and say, flat funding, considered a win in this environment. So flagging, looking at the Department of Education, Pell Grant program, flat-funded, same level as fiscal year twenty-three, same for work-study. Also for our international education programs, which we here at Carolina, we have the largest number of national resource centers that receive this funding within the Southeast. So again, critically important for our folks over at UNC Global. National Institutes of Health, which has seen very strong bipartisan support over the past decade, it received a slight haircut, less than one percent haircut there. So it shows, again, talking with our leadership, with Dr. Penny Gordon Larson, you know, for our researchers here, we're doing well. We're getting these proposals into the pipeline. But thinking through of ways to diversify the research funding that's coming here to UNC Chapel Hill, knowing that, you know, the NIH money may not always be there. And so let's look at other avenues to support the research that's being done here. So again, just want to, oh, and then with National Science Foundation, they also received a five percent decrease from fiscal year twenty-three numbers. And then want to point out that the National Endowment for the Arts and Humanities, they were both flat-funded equally. So at two hundred and seven million dollars. So now that Congress has checked off FY twenty-four, we are in the throes of planning for FY twenty-five. As again I said, it's silly season, March Madness. I've been in DC just about every single week since the beginning of February just last week with Dean Messonnier. Before that was with interim Chancellor Roberts and Athletic Director Cunningham, and then, you know, Vice Chancellor for Research, Penny Gordon Larson. So it's a busy but exciting time. And so now we are forging ahead. We're putting in our request with our North Carolina congressional offices and looking ahead for FY twenty-five. So with that, I will take any questions. So with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions? Chancellor has a comment.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I've had the opportunity recently to walk the halls in Raleigh with Amy and in Washington with Kelly, as she said, and you know, that's not unfamiliar territory to me, but I could not have been more impressed with the level of knowledge that both of them have of legislators and the issues and their staffs and the respect and admiration that legislators and their staffs have for the two of them. So we all understand how important state and federal funding is to this enterprise. We're extraordinarily fortunate to have these two women on the front lines on our behalf. Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Anything else, Kelly? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, sorry, Kelly, one second. Trustee Codis, go ahead.
Yeah, we actually, Chancellor Roberts, that was one of his first meetings that we lined up on Capitol Hill, visiting with the chairwoman. And so had a really great conversation, obviously with her being Chair of the House Education and Workforce Committee. She has a lot of priorities that she's trying to get done and across the finish line before the end of this Congress. And so with her receiving two degrees from here, you know, she is, she's a Tar Heel and wants to, you know, tout us and, you know, use us as a good example on the national stage, I would say, for affordability and accessibility. Well, that's a good question. I mean, we, she just passed out of committee, they had the Free Speech Act. I don't know the exact title of it, but that was just passed out of committee last week. She also has just in February, which we worked with her staff to provide feedback on the affordability costs for higher education. The, she's, what she's trying to do is dismantle parts of the Higher Education Act. And that act has not been reauthorized for quite some time. And so knowing that they can't be done comprehensively, and so there's, she's trying to do section by section. And so us in our office, we are extremely fortunate that we have such good relationships with her committee staff. I can just pick up the phone and call them and bounce ideas off of them, and they do the same for me. And so that's what I tell folks, we don't, behind the scenes, I mean, they call it government relations for a reason, and it's about having good relationships. And so we consider Virginia Fox as a, as a champion for us there in Congress.
Anything else, further questions? Thank you, Kelly, thank you so much. Next, we're going to have a WUNC update. We're going to hear from Paul Hunton, President and General Manager of WUNC. Mr. Hunton.
Good afternoon, it's an honor to be here, thanks for having me. If it goes on too much longer, none of the microphones might work. I know it's been, I know it's been a long day. Before I start, I want to speak to my reverence for Chancellor Roberts, family ties to public radio and what we do. I got to meet your mother once in Texas when I was running a station there. I had just become the general manager, and she came to do a speaking engagement, and she asked to see our program schedule. I thought that was odd, but I, Cokie Roberts, I showed it to her. She said, she said, oh no, you need more news, you need more news and information. That's what makes public radio strong. She said, how big is your newsroom? I said, five people. She said, you're really going to have to grow that if you want to succeed. So over the next couple of years, that's exactly what I did, and we did succeed. Our engagement, our audience, our impact, it all grew. And it's always stuck with me, and I've always had great respect for her. And when I was, was talking about speaking today, our Development Director mentioned that we honored her legacy years back at WUNC. And because we're public radio, you know, it's going to be a mug or a tote bag. And so on behalf of WUNC staff, I wanted to give this. We know you inherited her brilliance and creativity, so I look forward to your leadership. Um, okay, where's my deal here? Okay, um, let's get started. All right, so this slide shows all of the public nonprofit radio organizations in the state. None of them, not all of them are going to be news and information, some of these are music. North Carolina Central has a jazz station, et cetera. Here are the broadcast signals that all of the nonprofit public radio stations cover in the state. So as you can see there, it's most of the state, there's a couple of gaps in there, but for the most part, there is broadcast availability across the entire state of North Carolina. I want you to pay attention to that so that you can see this next slide here, which is our footprint. So as you can tell, we make up the majority of the broadcast signal in, for nonprofit public radio in the state of North Carolina. Our vision is to inspire all of North Carolina to engage with journalism and culture, enriching lives, and connecting communities. Our mission as a public media organization is to inform and engage North Carolina through journalism and culture. Our mission is to provide enriching, essential news and content of the highest quality to all communities. Our North Star, so as you may recall, when I was here last year, I had just arrived. I had just been here a few months, and so we've been embarking on creating a new strategic plan. This may seem pretty simple, but it's essential. We're working on that plan for the next three to five years, and our overall goal is to increase our audience. That's the name of the game in the news industry and in the media business. And we are competitive, even though we are a nonprofit, to increase our audience and reach as many people as possible. So we hope to grow our audience by 10% or more with a multi-platform data-driven strategy that meets people where they are. You may have read the headlines that have been popping up over and over that the media and the news industry is in some turmoil. Just last year, there were over 20,000 media jobs cut across the industry. So it's an imperative time for us. We are lucky, we are in a position of strength. WNC is very strong and has been for many years, thanks to the generosity of our supporters. But it's imperative over the next three to five years that we truly do our best work to reach people where they're at. I'm sure as you think about your news consumption habits, they've changed, not only over the last 10 years, but specifically through COVID. We look at things like the way people commute now, remote work. All of those things harm and affect broadcast radio listening. We see just in our listening trends that you can tell when people are working remote, and it's Mondays and Fridays because our listening goes down. So we're adapting to those changes that have rapidly hit us due to the pandemic and then now post-pandemic. So what we want to accomplish with our strategic plan, we want to make audience-first decision-making. We want to be driven by data. Data tells not all the story, but some of the most important story. Tells us where people are, what they're listening to, what they're consuming, how long they're listening. And all of that needs to be the thing that drives how we make decisions, where we put our news, the stories that we cover, et cetera. Here's just a quick graphic that kind of shows that. We want to define, know, and serve our intended audiences. We want to engage them on the platforms they use, so their phones, their smart speakers. Broadcast radio is still our biggest driver of audience. So obviously, we want to keep that audience and grow it if we can. But there's no doubt that broadcast as a technology is something that will continue to be less important as we go through the years. And then we want to match our publishing to your, to our audiences' lives, rhythms, and needs. I got an email just the other day from a sustainer who said he no, he no longer listens, and he didn't know if we did much state government coverage, and that's our strongest beat. Most of our strongest coverage and most of our reporting is done around the legislature and state government, and this person couldn't find it. And so we need to do better at getting our news to our listeners and to the communities of North Carolina. Here's how we're going to measure those things. This is the data that we look at. I'm not going to read them all, as you can see, broadcast listening there at the top. And as I said, still remains our strongest audience. But we want to look at our streaming, apps, podcasts, et cetera, all of those things. We want to engage more publicly, holding events, having town halls, focus groups, and really taking the work that we do to the audiences and communities that we serve. Here's some of our programming, both the national NPR programming. As you may or may not know, we are a mix of both local programming, and then a lot of our programming comes from NPR. That makes up the majority of what we do, as well as other distribution services. There's PRX, APM, some of those others that distribute. But here you can see some of our local content, The Broadside, Embodied, and then some of the national This American Life, Morning Edition, et cetera. We launched The Broadside in September of 2023, and we launched New Daily Show, Due South, in October of 2023. We're all about collaboration. One of the things we like to do is work with our colleagues at other public radio stations. Recently during Super Tuesday for the North Carolina primary, we hosted and anchored and broadcast a statewide special on the election. It was in collaboration with Asheville, Winston-Salem, Charlotte, and Wilmington. It was a one-hour special that aired on every station across the state, and we anchored that from our station. Embodied, a program I just spoke about, we inked a national distribution deal with PRX last year. This program airs on Houston, so it's in Houston, Boston, some of the biggest markets in the, in the nation, excuse me. And one really awesome fact that just happened last night, so Embodied won an AMBI. And for those of you not familiar, the AMBs are basically the equivalent of the Oscars for audio. And so that was a huge achievement and a big win that we've been celebrating today. So we hope to leverage that, not only to find more fiscal sponsorship, but also to leverage other stations to carry it. As you can see, we're in some of the biggest markets in the country. We want to continue to grow that so we can build that audience. The Broadside, which is a podcast that we launched last year, we, it's the most successful podcast in our station's history. We're up and above now 650,000 downloads, and it's focused on North Carolina. One of the things that I really have worked with my staff on is, you know, making sure that what we're doing and what we're thinking about is serving the state of North Carolina. A lot of times, there can be aspirations to try, in the digital world where you can reach everybody, to try to reach everybody. But we are funded by the people of North Carolina, and we want to serve the people of North Carolina. And so The Broadside is our attempt, that has been very successful, to focus on the stories of North Carolina. One of the most recent ones is we did the history of the first Charlotte Hornets jersey, the design of that jersey, and how that was an inspiration and continues to be for sportswear. So who listens to WNC? We have 270,000 weekly listeners, 9,300 average quarter hour. That means every 15 minutes, there's an average of 9,300 people listening. About 54% of them are male, 46% are female, 15% are African-American, 13% are Hispanic. Now, this number looks odd, 72% qualified as other. Nielsen calculates white and every other race as other. So that's why that's listed that way, and that's our largest listening sector. As you can see, the different age groups there as well. One thing is that 64% of those listeners prefer WNC over any other station. We have a very loyal audience. We are consistently one of the top three stations in the Raleigh-Durham market. We have one of the largest public media newsrooms in the Southeast. We serve a wide geographic area, which I, which I pointed out, that covers more than half of North Carolina's 100 counties. For this reason, we strive to produce news stories for a statewide audience. We have very strong community support. Last year, fiscal year '23, we had 40,500 households that supported us. To date this year, we're at 40,000, 43,900, which represents an 8% increase. 84% of those are sustainers who give monthly. Per the last national benchmarking, WNC has a higher percentage of sustainers than any other public media organization in the country. WNC has active donors in 98 of North Carolina's 100 counties, and we also have donors in all 50 states, plus DC and Puerto Rico. These are just some quotes, I'm not going to read them, but it's always fun to see what our listeners write in or call in and tell us about what they love that we do at WNC. This is our news team. Here's some of our collaborations. As I said, we work with all of the other public radio stations in the country, which are there on your left and on the right, the American Home Front Project. That's a national collaboration with other public radio stations across the country. You'll notice they're in communities that have a large military population. We work alongside them to share stories of the military, veterans, et cetera. And that's a national project that we work on and that we oversee or edit out of our offices. I've got audio on this, is there a way to play it? It's that, if you click that megaphone, it'll ask you to hit play. So up above the, on game day, so right there, yeah, hit play on that.
This is Morning Edition, I'm Will Michaels. It's a cloudy Saturday afternoon, game day for college football. And I'm standing between a centuries-old farmhouse and a big three-story barn at Hogan's Magnolia View Farm just north of Chapel Hill. For almost 100 years, this is where the Hogan family has been raising my favorite local celebrities, Ramses.
Just a highlight there of some of the work we do covering the university. We highly value the experts, researchers, staff, faculty that are at UNC Chapel Hill. They inform all the things that, you know, we have daily shows, we have, we have news stories. And so we're actively always doing stories on UNC, as well as using the expertise of the faculty and staff to, to help inform and to get that news out. So these are just some of the highlights of the stories we do about or with UNC Chapel Hill. It would have played anyway. Okay, here's some of the collaborations we have with the Hussman School, the Fletcher Fellowship for Education Policy Reporting. At the top there, you'll see, these are three reporters who came through that program, and now they are full-time employees at WUNC. And then below that, you'll see some folks who are part of the Fletcher Fellowship that have gone on to national roles, both at Marketplace and other public media stations. The Carolina Connection, that is a program that Adam Hochberg, our editor, teaches out of the Hussman School, that puts together a student radio program. And then we have a variety of different news internships, and most of those students that come through that are UNC Chapel Hill students. So looking forward, one of the things last year I had talked about was that we were looking to invest our reserves into a quasi-endowment, and we were looking for partners in that. I believe it was Trustee Codis who recommended we look at the UNC Management Fund. And through our vetting and auditing process, that's exactly what we decided to do. So thank you for that recommendation. They not only had the best presentation, but obviously head and shoulders above any other investment partner that we could partner with. So thank you for that. We have that invested with them, it's $10.5 million. We want to grow that over time. We don't necessarily have an exact number of what we're looking for, but we want to investigate, obviously, growing that endowment. One of the things, as I talk about turmoil in the news industry, one of the things that a lot of nonprofit organizations that steadies them through those moments are big endowments, right? Because you, you don't have to worry about the nature of advertising and what's going on in that industry. You get that return on that investment, so we're looking at that. We want to expand and enhance our broadcast and digital content. So one of the things I mentioned was that email that I received earlier this week from a donor who had said he was giving up because he couldn't find our coverage. We want to launch a state government newsletter so that people can get it when they want it, how they want it, and where they're at. That's the same for our news. There's podcast feed, there's all kinds of ways through the digital sphere that we can distribute our content to reach people where they're at. We want to expand and enhance our community outreach and conversations. We want to have more town halls, we want to do more events where we can bring stakeholders together to talk about different issues that the communities we serve face across the state. Before I get to questions, I also want to thank Trustee Jones. It is my understanding you recommended Mr. Bert Koontz to serve on our board. He's been incredible. His expertise and his experience has been, have been tremendous. He's already chairing our Committee on Investments, and has just been a thought partner and just a great supporter of WNC, so thank you for that. Any questions?
Any questions, Chairman Pryor?
Paul, congratulations on the.
Thank you.
In the interest of time, I'm not going to belabor this. I told you the last year that I am a regular listener.
Yes, you are, I know.
And that is, you know, drive time, morning, afternoon, and on the weekends. I really, I listen to all the shows. And I related to Chancellor Roberts earlier a story that I heard one Sunday afternoon. If you and I get together and have lunch, I'll talk to you about it.
Okay, love that, let's do it.
We did hear from Cokie Roberts, and she wanted her NIL share for that picture. Thank you, President Hunton, you appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much.
Our last informational item is to hear an update from Michael Andreasen, Vice Chancellor for Development. Mr. Vice Chancellor.
Thank you and good afternoon, Board. Vice Chair Ballantyne, appreciate you leading this committee in, in Trustee White's absence. We'll be brief today, and I'll telegraph that in our May meeting. We'll spend some time highlighting some of the wonderful gifts we've had this year. And then, of course, in the July meeting and the fall. And then of course, in the July meeting and the fall is when we look at our yearly performance. But what I want to do today is when I first met you all a year ago or so, I promised to always bring you a fundraising report, a scorecard, especially when the numbers are great and also when they're not quite so great. And so if you've looked at your packet today, you know that we've had a bit of a soft first half of the year. And I want to talk a bit about that and then share some data and then we'll go on from there. But before I show you the charts, maybe a little context. I've been thinking a lot about what we might learn from the first six months. And is there a trend or is it just an anomaly or is it something else? I will say, you all know, you are incredible donors to this great university. You're so generous and your time and your treasure. But you know, the donor conversation is not an exact science. And so one thing that we know happened in the fall, some gift discussions continued on into the new year and we're monitoring those as they go forward. So while we do set annual goals and, and six-month goals, we also know that timing has something to do with when these gifts are closed. Secondly, I'll show you a chart that in the last campaign, 63% or so of our fundraising total came from four of our largest units. They really drive the numbers and a couple of those units are having a bit of a tough year. I think it's largely due to some transition and leadership, some staffing vacancies. But I see it as a temporary situation. And it's my expectation that they will return to their well-established five-year run rate. I want to say one thing gently and thoughtfully. The end of the year is the giving season, as you all know, November, December. We had a, an institutional leadership change during that time. And I think that contributed to some donors who were just saying, let me see what's coming next before I commit to my next gift. And I just want to take a moment to thank interim Chancellor Roberts, who has jumped in. We have run you ragged to every game and to every city. And you have shaken more donor hands than I think you imagined. And we intend for that to continue, including a flight Friday morning to LA. So get ready for that. With a wind tomorrow, I know, knock on wood, but I'm an optimist. So we're really excited about the Chancellor's involvement in development. But I think if I had to boil it down to one thing, it is now clear to me that the single biggest factor we face, both in the six-month totals, but also as we kind of go forward, is we are in a hangover effect from the last campaign. We pushed so hard in the last two years, 18 months of that campaign to do something remarkable. And we've talked about it, we've celebrated, $5 billion puts us in rarefied air. But I am afraid we did it at the expense of not looking to the next generation of donors. And that's on development. We own that. And so as our highest priority going forward, we are looking across the entire campus, development community. How can we identify, cultivate, inspire and engage the next generation of donors? And we'll talk a lot more about that in subsequent meetings. But I wanted to give you that context as you look at these totals. So here they are. Through first six months of the year, $172 million in new commitments campus-wide. Our goal for the year, we always have a goal, it was 500, is $550 million. So we are a long way from halfway. But I will tell you, having looked at our third quarter preliminary numbers, which we will close tomorrow, there's strong momentum and we'll have better numbers to look forward to. Our current model puts us maybe in the 475 range. And with some extra good luck, we might even see that get into the $500 million range. Again, 26 units across the campus during fundraising. You'll note the $18 million non-conforming. And I don't want to belabor that point, but just to be consistent from year to year, I shared with you that during the last campaign, our industry updated some counting standards, the kinds of gifts we should count and the kinds of gifts we shouldn't count. And in 2019, they presented those standards and Carolina was a little out of compliance in two areas. But they strongly noted that if you're in a campaign, don't change those midstream. Finish your campaign and update them. So last July, we now adopted the new counting standards. It's the same counting standards that our peers across the country. About 15% of last year's, last campaign was the variance. About 10% so far in the first year. And so if you're interested in more details about what that represents, I can talk to you about it. But we are comparing apples to apples. Next slide, I mentioned to you our four large units. You can see the two, I don't need to name them, that are having a bit of a tough first half of the year. As I mentioned, I think that's largely to do with some factors that are being addressed. And I am optimistic as we go forward. I do want to call out four units in particular that are just crushing it. 80% of their goal through six months of the year. Morehead Cane Foundation, School of Education, School of Nursing and our University Libraries. They're having a fantastic year and I think it's largely leveraging the momentum of the last campaign and building upon that. So I'm quite, I want to just call them out and celebrate their, their success. We always look at cash. Not, not surprising, cash is down as well. We'll see that number rise as we go for the second half of the year. Okay, finally, we have been quite busy. And I think I shared with you in the fall. What are we doing for the next campaign? We've talked a lot about at the base of that pyramid assessment. Really understanding what we did last time, these last eight years, what went well, what didn't go well. We've brought in Grenze Bach-Gleer. Some of you met John Gleer in previous conversations. He and his team are working with us to look backwards as well as look forward. Want to just thank the Provost for his partnership. We've had just fantastic free substantive training and, and role-playing and planning sessions with our deans and our executive leadership team. Substantive amount of time, half-day sessions. In fact, one case was a full day. We really got into it and worked together on how to refine our pitch, establish our priorities and get ready for the next campaign. It's also noted that more than half the deans are new and haven't really done fundraising before. So this is really their first exposure to that. Planning, we're doing lots of review policies and assessing how our volunteers are organized. But I want to draw your attention to qualification. I can't say it enough, this is that point I made earlier. We've got to figure out where the next generation of donors are. We know there's tremendous affinity and loyalty for this university. But if we're not face-to-face with those individuals, inspiring them to give, they won't give. And so that's important. We're also looking at accountability, metrics for our staff. I'm proud of the staff and what they do, but we need to stand on measurable activity. Visits, asks and dollars raised. So stay tuned for more of that as we continue to do that work and update those. The future, we'll continue to think about priorities. We will look at the administration and leadership in this board to identify the next campaign. Yesterday was a great day. You all know, because we sent you a thousand emails reminding you it was Giving Day. This is a wonderful legacy of new technology driving digital giving. 9,900, just shy of 10,000 people gave yesterday. Or I should say gifts, but I think they're mostly individual people. And 6.5 million was raised. The intention of that day is to get first-time donors to step up and make their first gift. And Chancellor and I had some fun with some of our staff and students yesterday. So that was great. I just want to take a moment, not scripted, but certainly the question that trustee Turner asked earlier about, and I appreciate Chancellor Knutman's response, Vice Chancellor Knutman's response. Is development aligning its fundraising parties to deal with budget reality? Not as well as we should. And so I would say a couple of things. One, I've been doing this a long time. Donors hate to fill budget holes. It's just not an inspiring conversation. So we don't quite think of it that way. And donors also like to do new things, especially when it comes to capital projects. But I do think we can align our work in a more functional way. And, and we are so decentralized here. And so I would say across the colleges, a dean would say, these are my priorities and these are my needs. And so how can I have my staff do this? I think we have an opportunity in the next campaign to do more from the center. Work with the Chancellor, work with the Board, work with the Provost to say, well, what are those institutional priorities? It's also true that U D O, the Development Office that I oversee or the central part, we don't have enough fundraisers. We've had lots of folks doing supportive fundraising. I want to grow that because they will then become those fundraisers who can move forward. But we are doing some things right now. We mentioned earlier, the new major gift officer focusing on historic preservation. Deferred maintenance is another way to think about that. We're working on some commercialization and research at Moonshots with our new Vice Chancellor, Jedrick Carter. And I also think we will always commit and affirm our commitment to the Carolina Covenant. It's an incredible program. I don't think you all understand, this is the envy of the country. And it's based upon the generosity of our legislature. It's just, it can't be overstated. We got to thank Raleigh every day we can. But Carolina Covenant is a covenant that needs to be there even during downtimes. If there's a recession, and there will be at some point, and if there's a cut, that's where the pressure. So one thought I have is we can grow the Carolina Covenant Scholarship Program, both grow it in terms of the number of students, but we can also replace institutional dollars with private dollars. That will free up some institutional money to do other things. So more to come on this, but I think it was a great question and we can do a better job. That's my report. I don't know if there are questions. I know we have work to do in executive session.
Do you have a question on when campaign gets active and what now is your comment?
So we're having a big debate about that. I was interesting, I was at the system meeting with the other 16 vice chancellors. And two of one, and I think it's largely to do with scale. They were saying, well, it's good to take time between campaigns. I was the one who said, no, I don't think so. We don't take time, but we do take time between the public nature of the campaign. I think, I think folks are a bit tired of the big number and the big effort. We should never be tired of the work and the ask. And I don't think, I don't think there's donor fatigue. I think there's donor fatigue of talking about the number. One of the interesting questions that I don't have an answer for you is will the number be the thing? And some of our peer institutions, large publics and a few privates, are actually saying, we're going to raise a lot of money. It doesn't matter how much total it is, but does the money actually move the institution? And so I think impact is what we're going to really focus on. And that's the work we're doing with our academic leadership right now. But we'll be back to this group to talk about this question. There are some value in having a, a goal, right? It drives us to a certain agenda, but this calls for a backlash. I'm reminded of my colleague, Chris McClure, said to me, is $5 billion really $5 billion? And we had that debate about, well, it's $5 billion in commitments. It's not $5 billion in cash. And how do we make that communication? So it's a really important question.
Any other questions? Thank you, Vice Chancellor. This concludes our open session items for today. I think trustee CODIS has a motion. Heard the motion, I have a second. Representative Senator Bryan, trustee Bryan, seconds. Any discussion or debate? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries.